Go down two more pages. Thing such as the average impact of the list proposed, it really depends on how many values are projected. But it's going to begin this general all time, we never change it. But it would be an increase that's proposed on average, but it's drawn about fifteen hours. The next chart shows our building foot heads. And if you look at twenty-two, twenty-two is the year it's collecting the twenty-three balance. And so there you got the fifty million dollars of new growth and so far this year. From the board in another year out for taxes, we've got significant value already come through and all looking at. It's ninety-two, we have a capital and things that have to grow. We will take that position maybe in the hour, we will still have some in both. And then I'm not going to put a lot of money into making your own. As you have like a evaluation every year, you can have a little stand shot of the room. That I think your right is home, right, Jonas, properties are not in order, you don't have to do a search. But you can see on the right hand side, all the differences. So this year it is all over the board and here is finding a few of these properties that are actually falling down. You can write up all the changes before a lot of people. So all of them. If you take a look at this sample, and it was a very small sample compared to the overall big town. Our little sample is the second to the last. It could have been, I would look at. Citywide, that now from residential property is up six point four two. So the sample is only small and simple for us. If we go to the very next one, it's a commercial property. Commercial property overall with the loving rate that was proposed. The total of the bottom though, about one point one percent. Um, citywide or tax, yes, but our sample on this one is hopefully various to you. Surrounding property, although we're doing only the type of each other here, there about one point four. And so actually, we're going to go to our sample. But I like seeing same top with the whole forward and paying a year. And then the next chart. Ninety-eight, page ninety-eight. This is the snapshot, this is on the current year, not next year, because we do not have a loving rates and all the other taxing values yet. But just for comparison to kind of how a senior of of the re-potash. The city of no means taxes for residential and commercial are both lower than our surrounding communities. For an average residential property in an average. Average median of three years, home seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand. In the commercial market at six hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And you have sixty-sixty fifty percent difference here in residential property. And at our thirty-two dollar growth, if you add out a residential three thousand three twenty-six. You have thirty-two dollars now in this year. We're still going to be.
Sorry, um, is that similar in operating for horizon, south portion? Which is about part of the city.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm sorry, I'm trying to think of, oh, there we go, I didn't really change that.
I guess if it was one of our countries of certain.
Yeah, and I'm definitely want to be very, very. And then one of the last charts here to catch on, and the last chart, I spent hours just on the chart, I just wanted to be able to. And so this chart shows is our property tax collection and our loving rate. And I think we just talked about this one of our, we around here. But what is shown here is that with forty to ten years, our values, total values in the city was up point nine point two percent. I'm sorry, it didn't show that. It continually all changes over the right hand side, our values were at point nine point two. But our taxes really only took advantage of about twelve percent of that total growth. And as we move year on year, that's something that we need to decide, for our responsible, where is the amount, what portion of the full growth do we need to be taking advantage of so that you know, you can't make, you can't wrong, it is operating. And fund at the proper level. This year, as you know, we are going potentially to be taking sixty-three percent of that growth. So it will be much higher than what it has been in the past, just to kind of show you as we, as we move year on year, we're going to talk about that.
So again, just to get the understanding in my brain, right, this, this trend has kind of been all over the place, actually, we were fairly steady. Last years, but we're up, the percent change here for those budget. But that is because the CIP is dependent upon the PCI index recommendations for what we need to do to maintain, maintain, let alone improve our system. Like that is the driver for this particular progress. Yes.
And there's a second factor to that, and that is growth. This is showing the growth in actual amount we take in. And if we never capture that growth, this just becomes more aggressive and aggressive and aggressive. And I think we, we are, we've been taking advantage of that and people that are, like rate percentage have. We must use, especially with the retirement tip, one allows very impressive in how some of that is gone down. Had to pull back to the dollars.
And that when you talk about the loving rate, you can see that on this chart, it goes from here. Here for that loving rate. So within this team, it has been tied at two dollars a eighth and now initially loving rate.
No, it is the right direction overall, you want to see your growth happening. Taking advantage of some of that growth, some cities they presented and children investing heavily in their infrastructure. Keep in mind that we invest heavily in the infrastructure, for, you know, replenishing our assets. Same time, I want to appreciate. So our growth is actually funding the way we're. What's happening, if you have no growth, not be able to invest as heavily as we are planning to look forward. And that's, you know, maybe beyond just our growth, because our growth is a gift. Like that tunneling change, change is going to be drawn. And then it's way, that's kind of what we're thinking about longer term. What we did in former cities and points out, and keeping up the pace that people are starting to hustle to. Purpose of food infrastructure, a little bit sidewalks, a little bit of the roads and so on, so. There's a big plan, what basically they're describing, but this is the direction of all cities. This one that we're.
This part, we're heading to the last chart and we're. On one over. This is the little thing that is just kind of showing the changes in the value. And with it over on the, I think, having half that sheet is all of the values of our true product. And just down to the stage at thirty million dollars, that is a positive increment. And those two retire and it will be over a period of years. But right now, as a proposed one dollar and eighty cent loving rate, that would have went to about four hundred, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. And those two towers, so we've been three dollars coming back on. Actually, we need a few years to do that. And the last one, we jump right into the general account for that. You saw this the other night, but this is just a snapshot as we now start going to each individual of the major operating on the surface agenda. If you look at, I'm sorry, the new values. Very first one, we'll see the general one and depending on that. Spending expenditure, we're going to act, there's that twenty-seven eighty-eight in twenty-four and you see it going down. With twenty-five and twenty-six. And jumping down to all the earthquake funds, a lot of them on sanitation, when we went to all those a couple of months ago. Every single one of the funds, major fund on this sheet, our values.
By twenty twenty-six.
So any questions on charts or any of the charts you were in?
Oh, thank you, that was really.
So then we are going to start right out of the sheet here. We're going to talk about the, the fancy general, we're going to. Very excited, we'll be our new personnel. Uh, one to the eight. And these provisions we talked about on two of these in that.
I guess if there's questions, that's what we're here for, and all the directors and presidents, you know, so. There's questions about it, I really don't have anything to say.
I mean, they are already in the budget as presented in bigger balance and the majority of them that are being created are cost saving. And we have a company now, I can't find.
Yeah, I wanted to address that, the law director has been asked since the summer took office. Out of the MO, and I had asked for from you, it's taken a long time to sort of, you know, floating under that and see where things could go. But I've always maintained that bringing, um, some of those dollars for that service back into the community by bringing some of that work in-house again, um, makes sense. So I'm very glad to see that there's cost savings there that can help on that as far as I understand it. Um, and also that we still maintain the expertise of the folks that have the.
Besides do over whole room, which we're. Got the script of the argument during. It's ready to go, so, so we'd be advertised subject to council.
And I'm encouraged by the fact that Rock Island has brought in in-house counsel that we will be able to find someone for the area as well. Hopefully this won't be typical felt as some of the. Uh, I, I wanted to say also, human resources manager, as we look at increased training, um, in varieties of areas that you mentioned the other night. But there, it's, I think it was huge to me that mentioned all the things that some of us in our industries have to be trained on year after year after year, like that thing kind of approach as, as appropriate. Um, and if that is the position that can help make sure that gets done, um, then we should be fine. Those are my thoughts, Mr. Schip.
I, uh, I think that there is a strong rationale for all of the things. Changes on rules, I agree, I appreciate that, I do think though that, um, this is where I misrepresent something a little bit, and I want to make sure counsel and understands this too, because when we have another residential housing expector spot, there where we say it's offset like one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, that is through the sense that that money is, remains in a restricted fund. So when we total this up, it really should only offset as much as that cost is. Which means if these positions are actually adding a cost of three nine thousand. It's not three thousand dollars, because three hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred maybe from that rental housing program is not actually offsetting anything else, it can only. For the fees that are associated.
So we try to break down my fund, we get the general fund. It will be a full four, that will be the increase to two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Again, that was just presented offset. How do we get there, superior or three, how is it future operating? And then all the facilities there, the wireless, all the sanitation, those that are our bill pending fees that we have been. And in our liability fund, you'll see that actually down, that's the other half of the big offset without leaving.
And that one absolutely we fell across, because that's not coming from a restricted area. My, my problem is that we're, we're thinking about a total savings, replying a lot of savings out of this new. We're also assuming full collection, which is people are going to make sure this happens, so that even that number, I think, may not be the total reality most likely. Um, so I, I just don't want us to be saying we are adding positions without adding costs, because I think that's not what's really happening. That said, I think the rationale here and the cost savings that are included make as much use of that pattern forward, and I say that's how we are standing.
Then it's a better way of finding, I mean, just there are still questions.
But I think. No, I, this is not a zero cost addition decision. There isn't three hundred thousand dollar cost, but adding this staff, holistic.
Holistic or the whole program cost.
Correct.
Right.
It's about a half a. That said, there is a lot more revenue coming to positions, which potentially is going to add values.
Correct, because the council will freely increase the license and cost to each of every rental property.
Right, because that's not going to impact the general. And that's not going to, like, so the way to get a offset, it's really what we're saying, the cost for all the actions. It's not saving the cost that we want to spend.
And, and that's where, that's where we should have a total line, not all. You should maybe look at the total per each individual apartment. Reactively. And I'm just doing it.
And I'm still fully supportive, like I said, I just want to say it's possible, we're setting that right wing to our residents.
We feel like that's a modified. It would modify my approach, I'm a lord of the clubs.
Thank you.
I have two questions about, I don't think that, I'm just interested in that, you know, we don't have the fund or. Because we have heard lots of. So will this be an advance, I mean, there will fund that for the. Question one, question two is, we have added code enforcement with fees, have we anticipated those, uh, fees from code enforcement? Or that, so if there's a violation of the. Violation, I can't think of the word, but they had. That's a payment, right. Have we, have we projected that some percent?
We have not projected what type of, I think, for example, through buying fees that are being charged. And this is working right, knowing that this was a big, they tested, right, or a little bad case.
They're, that's considered, yeah. And for the funding.
That revenue is not. The positions themselves, so, so soon that we know, you know, whether looking at the license or whatever.
Thank you, all right, um, on me, we're actually, I don't know, next week, we thought we'll be here to send out all of the applications and license and invoice. And then actually, June, January, March. Now, we'll get all the revenue, decrease the revenue to end of January. But it will be trickling, so I'll do it on, I don't know, people, and one. We ready, we heard this entire happening, it was down this January and March, but it will probably be trickling all the way.
Then, is this based on, um, designation for public utilities as a rental? Is that our, uh, thing that we set water and then save us directly doing this, is that who we're going after first? For these license units, or does that make a couple of.
For what? He said on. The designation of owner occupied homes. If you are not an owner occupied home, and that's in Fred, and in two thousand and two, it started. Who do all the ones that are not owner occupied? And then we all do the councils, and we have gotten together and confirmed. Or we receive our homes or. That's how we're, that's how we're starting to.
Thank you.
What's next? Or any further questions about personnel?
I just piggyback on what Bobson, the fact that we are now kind of a city attorney, law, law director. I think it's, uh, what you said, it's long. Law director sits slash attorney, because I was here when the United City Attorney is just more of comfort.
All right, let's continue.
Motion to approve the personnel.
Certainly.
By, just saying by O'Brien, um. Can you do call calls for this?
Then you go with me, go with the slide.
At the end, wait, sorry, any further, it's good. Here, you have a call call.
All persons, does he have, with that? Can you? Ben, O'Brien?
Next up is the general one, tab six. Try to give us a page number and put out.
And then start back around the very, very unique way for. And as we head down, the twenty-three years, we'll see currently, as we are recommending the new budget now in December, for our million fund balance of point eight point eight eight. And, um, that balance, I hope they just a year in general, that includes nine million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars of advances to all of our. That tip advance amount is going to continue to grow over the next few years. And hopefully we're going to have that, we're going to plan for the LRS, but right now the budget is built upon that that it will still be advancing in the joint level. So has been moving to twenty-four, and this is not underwritten, we will have to advantage in twenty-four of ten million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, jumping up to eleven million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, or twenty-five, and then eleven million, six forty-five, and twenty-six. Even regardless of those tip on our pool, we are still bound in the general fund and belong to that bottom presentation.
Okay, we are.
A running short.
Running.
We look at twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, that's where we had twenty-seven point eight eight percent and going down to twenty-seven, and now we're down. Well, this fund is the main operating fund for the city and for new council members. We had a dog for police and fire, and fire, HR department, mayor of the council, administration, all of the. So it is indeed a major operating entity, and it is. If we turn the page, this is where you can see the line with all other departments, and I'm not going to go through it all, you're very welcome to see that. Um, I've talked about several times how that, we're only walking up to one point. If you take a look at the current year, the twenty-three year, we'll clear to the very bottom. We have total expenditures of fifty-two million. Then you'll see it dropping down to thirty-nine million. We need to net out on one time expenditure, so we've got a terrible base error. So in twenty-three, we need to back out one million and a hundred thousand dollars that we were holding in the general fund that is now going over to the I-74, in KF, our, our new site, our project. That's a million dollars of current. In addition, as you know, the federal fighter, we've restricted over two million dollars, set aside for future construction. General, we will now leave our tackle. And out of the general fund and going to be restricted in the. Then, the time of earlier this year, all those. Park roads and parking lots at River Side, that was above the normal transport, which would have the general fund at eight hundred and twelve thousand. If you net those expenditures of Stanford House off of fifty-two million, that brings us down in twenty-three. Um, brings us down to forty-eight million by ninety-three, oh, seventy-two. That compared to the twenty-four budget, as we said, at fourteen million, two fifty-three, that is your one point three percent difference. It's not fair to say it's going down, because you do a one-time transfer, but net of. And those are very, very conservative budgets, and that even includes all the. And there are ambitious people that are saving, that are probably set down. Any questions on those? We're going to move down two pages. And very frequently, not in, in a lot of. This chart is showing the overall fund balances in the general fund, without any advantages to the other. So if we did not advance one of them, this is where we would be at. Last three columns on the chart, our combined is essentially in that twenty-five plus range.
Which means our tax rate would go way down if we were to stay within our unbalanced policy.
We keep weighing it down. We work in the.
Yes, certainly, plus we.
Okay. Uh, that, that in front, so it's, it's a little. As we think about where those tips are, all of the action, how much of that is, like, planned, right? We made a decision to say.
We made a decision to say, we need this investment, we're going to pump this in, and we know it'll pay us back. Twenty years from now, right, and, and so some of that is investment, right, and it's a process twice. How much of that is tips that perhaps shouldn't have happened. Or, or things happen that may turn upside down. Do you have any idea? Now, is it mostly planning? Is it mostly mistakes? But what's putting us on this position? And I know, I'm asking you, but we're not here, I'm trying to look.
We're here, it's very difficult to do that, but when you look at formation, yeah, well, does you speak there? I think that's a great example. Really enlightened area, truly a qualifier of this law for a tip. And, uh, I mean, define the limits of the tip area, the boundaries. Yeah, I actually are, are capturing within that boundary, all of the property. Right, so all the E A D that's there, and it's taxable, is all within the. So if you look at a project similar to like Parry's, you know, that's what we're overall, before, before it's all done, that may be a twenty million dollar. So just capture that for about twenty million. Before that project happened, when the council established. All the property within the boundaries, at a total value of sixty. So now take Par, let's say it's one. Par equals almost what? Eighty five, ninety percent of what's there, there's one single project. So that's ideal, that is absolutely ideal. Now let's go to the, to the ball. To the balls. Other example. They defined the boundaries at that time, and they took into account all the property, all the maintenance, so all eighty eight acres. Then they had a project to tear down the Sears, you know, build the Dick's Sporting Goods Store, tear down the food court, you know, put in the parking lot improvements. And, and that was captured as a very specific dollar amount, like that project. Nothing happened after that. So because nothing happened over that, you know, it was a small value relationship to the total concrete, the opposite of what we did. So unless you see development happening, like the Yonkers building coming down. Other buildings being built, instead of just having massive parking lot. You know, there's no dollars going into there, at the same time, the values of tip were dropping. They were feeling their assessment every year. We stopped giving them a tax rebate, and a rebate, because they were not using it. So you don't, defining the area is critical, and knowing what the investment issue is going to be into. Not always going to sell by the percent, eighty percent, like we have, maybe twenty five percent. Other little projects that happen. About projects, city goes upside down.
But that is the key, is that without the development, we can't manage to, it means we can't make tax rates better for our residents.
And I think we have, we can, we hold them, there were several tests, and the last one, from the outstanding. With the system, now the additional bonds, and in anticipation of the development, that unfortunately, we. And we could be left hanging very long, and really not interested in that, but he was trying to call it. Like what was just bonded, as the city able to work with the development, really, that's kind of, I feel, very, very. If you offer, a lot of times, the city has to offer the thing that's for development. If we offer too much, and then that be more than what the development actually comes back on actual, that it can't be given back, that's how you get after. And that's a lot of the, other ones, for the, that, that is that we offer too many intended.
So we really do depend on the development agreements to be put in a way that, that are really balanced, that benefit the city and the, the developer.
One thing you're alluding to, like just, you're talking about which one was a mistake, some of it's kind of a fatal, right? Just started with a negative background. Then, first of all, the project was. No other one of them fall back.
I think they're all uniquely different.
Yeah.
I mean, you have to look at. However, that's what, yeah.
Well, and did, I just, what, you mentioned, and I did some here and there, but you mentioned, um, inflation sort of started bubbling and the bulk went out. Also, when the. Wilderness Association representatives, they started saying that the top of the years are starting to come down. Starting to level, so at least in terms of new tip projects, you may have a biting chance of, to, to get some of that development.
Just, without any specifics, there are tests we have that were, the agreements were amended multiple times, uh, after they were approved. Make them no longer compliant with the initial agreement, which is something we need to prepare for in the future as well. It's a common trick, that developer might promise the moon, and over time say, oh, we can't deliver, we need a lot of returns, and then we end up on the hook. Or the, the increments never. Those were all factors. Part of why we're probably. And one thing, when I was with history, I mean, I would believe that Parma crashed in two thousand. It probably played a key role in some of these going upside down as well. If, not that it was in every case, I'm sure there were those that were amended less wisely, but, um, probably circumstances. But thank you, everyone, for the explanation. I want to think that as we're thinking of planning, we'll.
Appreciate that for our conversation about it, and also thanks to those in development, who have to do, like, have to have their foot on the gas, but all that. I can just speak as the, the environment we're in, for building, for the environment we're in, for incentives, et cetera, et cetera, it's all, it's a constant battle, so appreciate that for. Anything further on this particular?
Yeah, this is to show the next one. To show them who we are, how, we're the cash again. The little R, on this chart is showing how we are, the general fund through the last three. On the next chart, that we are within our. Um, next thing, when we talk about this reason, so. Yep, but this does show, if the LRS doesn't go forward, which is only the general fund in that. And then, currently, we have a heap of capital damages that we're tishing for in twenty three. A third company, and we need to count. If we break ground on the LRS, that will drop by.
You're all incorrect, too. I give. For past years, it went.
This one, if we start top revenue, it's only the own general fund. The top ten revenues that we showed you the other night, with citywide, and power, and power, everything are diversified. This is just narrowed only for the general fund, and our top ten revenues here, they are quite diversified, they are citywide, but, um, about eighty four percent of our revenues should come from the top ten revenues. And that's what we get, so now we're going to follow along with the agenda, we're just going to make some highlights.
Yeah. For, uh, on P twenty five, I could. The original. General fund. Charts. There is a, a section under public works to bridge. And one hundred sixty five thousand a year, I understand that less than a half percent of our operating budget. I just wonder if, all, all of our convention I recorded the other day, there's ongoing maintenance, there's, the buildings, you know, it, it's, it's see better days, not fine shape. I wonder if there's a plan we could utilize to say, when the leases are done, we ask tenants to leave, and we can board up, though we're not spending.
Twenty six dollars a dollar.
But we're still, I mean, that's still a hundred sixty five, hundred seventy thousand a year, that we could potentially drop down to, you know, twenty thousand, or whatever we're paying in order to minimize the cost of this project, I, I, we, we literally run the sub basin for the river plumbing. Uh, it, it's, it's, we could save some money, I just wonder if there's a plan, when the leases are up, we can ask the plan.
Most of them, I think, moved to month to month, I think, because they were pretty much there when we acquired back in December. So at this stage, I would say, if anybody left, if they were longer than a month to month, you know, we could probably start moving people out. You know, I'm sure all not for profits, somebody would like to be located, that would be setting it up for some other cities.
There's plenty of space that that will help me.
The taxes, the building space, the building space, air to jet space, we have a lot of working office spaces.
There's just, the infrastructure there, it's running on under your old boilers, uh, the, the, the gas bites are not perfect, uh, we're hiring. It's a lot of issues. This cost isn't going to go away, and I think it's a burden on. And.
Oh, it isn't worried.
Yeah.
Devotion toward part. Part of the M K S K studies to reveal what any part of that project could be impacted, because it's just part of the whole plan, so. Though we're likely to run into that demolition.
I just prefer reporting out, and, and quick, quick with a hundred and seventy thousand a year, or reduce it as much as.
And you're saying rather than leaving that M K S K report? This is probably some.
I, I think, we, there is no doubt that as it is, is not going to continue, we're not going to continue lease of office space, so reducing our maintenance costs now, and planning for that, set up a concept via a year, over the next many years, might be a better.
Especially if we're looking for funds to help M C D C's pay on its speed, et cetera. Sure.
I'm going to tend to sit again. Then a rough question.
Six, no. Yeah, it's seventy, down six.
Three, definitely.
Yeah. And the revenue is what, twenty six thousand, apparently, comes in off the leases.
Yeah. I felt ready.
We find that.
And it's meant to be over time. I would just say this, if we do vacate a property, let's please make sure we fund appropriately what it takes to be ready for looking like a speedable building. Because that's an eyesore, and I don't want to have another one in a prime development location. And that will, that will take money to actually support all the buildings, or their broken out, or the building is too bad by anybody.
So there's no motion to be made about this, however, uh, if you're getting any kind of consensus from the council at this point, we definitely would like you to come back with some kind of, um, information on how to reduce costs there, and also. That's not appropriate, can we?
Yes, I would say, I'm not totally sold on. We're so passionate, I mean, I want, I want to understand if cost of that, there's other options. How many of those, I got one of those, um, nonprofits out, I, I.
No, I think, like, I think any plan you come up with has to work for C E D to have a place for them to build, that's at the same cost, more or less than.
And said, I am at least open to being told, this is the most comprehensive option, if we're going to be spending a hundred anyway to maintain, I mean, let's see what those numbers are.
We'll come back. I have that.
Okay, thank you. Anything further on that section from your. Yes.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, it's just the time has to be pushed right, because I would. Report it out, but what if we decide to do something, um, just sit down, see, fall throughout the year, and, but, people will get in there to bring them, and so that, and if, if it is empty, it's silent, so there would be other things that they might worth. Just for long, just in a, for that personal thing, if I'm not, then also, I know that I've seen some people do that, because people do that, and it's very, a lot, people will get in, not personally. This time of the week. I need to say another word about.
Yeah. Thank you, all right, are we at budget funded, cancer asphalt program one fifty? Thank you.
Currently in the operating room for the public work budget, as part of the asphalt program that we're developing, that we're pushing. Get a hundred and fifty thousand into the operating, for the, the hot mix, and potentially the asphalt, at the bigger meeting. The paper, we're going to talk about a little bit, is actually coming out of our, and that's true, and we're working on. So we want to know, the general fund that we have presented includes an efficient hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So we're coming back to this, right?
Yeah. We're going to hit it, we should be in that.
And this, this, and this, Sarah, yes, yeah.
There's money. Okay, so now.
And they come in, no? On the next slide, it's, she pointed out, you know, although, we have a doubt that everything is steady, in the general fund, over.
Oh, sorry.
But I, question here to you, but, with, on, on that hundred fifty thousand dollars, do we have any idea? Anyway, to measure how much patching that relates to?
Like, not this time. I mean, we, we know that the equipment will do, it's going to be, um, I'll, it's going to take us time to figure that out, since we have to, because we're not going to be doing production over, like, we're going to tell you that we're going to be able to achieve a certain amount, we're going to be able to prepare, so.
Actually, we, we may, like, how many, that, I mean, I understand we wouldn't know how many patches, that's, the patch is very inside, great. But.
But as far as what that hundred fifty will give us, you said.
Yeah, like, I, I have.
I can get back to you on.
I just, and, and I understand it will be a well estimate.
Sure.
It would depend how deep you have to go, and. But if we.
You should.
It's all the, Sarah said, it's all the.
Our list.
We should be able to give you a rough idea of what the, the bond will cover, and if it's either your power, correct, we can give that back to you.
I don't know yet, but you know, roughly, prior to this, prior years, how much have we budgeted for the shots of the man, and seeing this, how, how we can compare.
It's, it, it's, uh, I think we've budgeted more than that, I think, typically.
For a dollar.
It, it should be more than double.
Yeah, it's more, it's more than double, and that's the name of it as well.
That would be aligned with our significant focus on. Stu T. Yes, very.
Uh, we're probably fair to say, uh, another fair answer to that question is, what we do on Fridays as far as street builders. For the.
How, how much time in the paper will be out, it's true.
But the, the Fridays when we're doing especially.
Yeah, that can, women, it's one day.
A little bit, yeah. I don't want to take you too long, we, we watched a demo the other day. Uh, we're here in the street, and according to the streets manager, you showed a section of road, you took them. And by, the, the paper, we would be about, so we will have a very minimum, see, more. We're putting it down, and more repairs done, and throw off the line, so I think we save. But we're going to vote on these.
The motion at the bottom is not put up to, to do that, but certainly a bold one.
Yeah, I like that bold.
Okay, so we'll make sure we do two, but, uh, I'll. We'll just make the first motion to not remove that, and anything else. Um, yeah, you could make a motion to remove that.
I'm making a motion to remove the asphalt.
Program.
Program. Program. Make a separate motion.
Second, I think, all the person writing it, um, will call.
Only person who sees it?
Uh.
And that.
Your honor.
Oh, I've come forward, sorry. We're doing so much, I can't forget, dropping all this. That's, that is your.
How, um, I think it's only a matter of time before we start doing more and more of this, uh, types of asphalt. Are you gonna get, is there a plan by milling machine to ground down the pavement, uh? No, because Daboport has got an asphalt machine. And I don't know if you had the time to drive the Daboport and see some of the streets they've done. They don't, they don't use a milling machine. Doesn't last as long, it's, it's not as good as.
The, the plan would be if we got into something larger, we can contract that out. The cost of the business machine is pretty very hard to get in, it's part of what we're talking about. But if we got into something where it's a little bit longer, that might look a security where that would. That, uh, easily put in, that needs to be tackled. I understand there are concerns based on actions we've seen Daboport taking and starting a program like this and trying to expand that beyond what it is. Uh, I don't think, I know that's not our intention. You obviously can't control that long term future, but even if the future, some council wanted to try and stretch to do that. Just buy machines to do that and sell that, I think, I think giving our staff the tools that they need to do this better work is, is a wise path forward, and I, I wanna see us entering that call more residents rather than afraid that somewhere on the lines, we would try and. It's kind of machine to.
Start being this.
Well, I may agree with, with. Uh, Daboport is not saying this on a machine, you're talking. Right now, we're trying to get something started, you know, start progression on the streets, so on all the ways that I'm doing again, trying this.
I would just like to remind, we're voting on a motion to make two flight items, not on tighter programs.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should probably should have kept the conversation to just the motion to do it separately, but. Having had the conversation, are we finished with this, uh, motion to split the general fund? Take that one, help me do it separately. All right, we'll call. Only person who sees it.
Hi.
That.
Hi.
Timmy and.
Hey.
Ben, uh, Orion.
Hi.
Asper, hi, Schmidt.
Hey.
Orpium. Right, the motion passes, we'll have two separate motions. Yuri, please continue.
You're on.
Oh, sorry.
And I'm confused, you're right, we would just take the motion now as part of like, and I can't, we had to deal with emotional trauma more, but.
I think in keeping with what's going on here, we're get, we're trying to get all the information and then make the motions about adopting the general fund budget.
And then we just further the maintenance.
That was one way we could have gone, but we've already gone with separating this one, that one in house.
So you didn't want to oppose the voting on it now?
But I'm just, but, but whoever rules here, I think. I, I.
But you just have to make that motion at this time. Well, I guess you would have to.
I, I would prefer to just continue and get all the information on the general fund before we make any formal, um, votes on the general fund. Thank you. Please continue.
It's kind of the more informational, so we can work right out which two, because each two will back up. I just want to report these items out. Number one, again, we talked about the earthquake, we're, we're happy. We are funding the first phase, bringing people up to the minimum and the, uh, pretty high level, and it will be six hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. With our kids in retirement fund, these are going to have a general fund. And the city's contribution is three point eight million dollars to our annual, now that is due, and then in addition, there is five projects. We're gonna talk about that briefly later in the day. Combination of those two equals nine point four million dollars, or even higher. It is still saving us an average of two and a half million dollars per year for, prior to the shaming of this P O B. Four, seven and a half million dollars, so while, and they, if we agree on. Hundred point now. And then transfers, I just want to go through briefly, there's actually a page in your document that lists out transfers for every month for three years. It is a general fund, it's a total of one point six hundred and eighty-five thousand. The Bronx Department is getting an annual funding of eight hundred thousand a year to supplement their operating budget as well as capital. Um, in the library, there's twenty-five thousand dollars additional money for capital. For our special events, it's ten thousand dollars. It's not like small man, but it's. You know, our public safety equipment fund, there's sixty thousand that we put forward, fire, target, and more capital fund for future, we're taking the radio and that would. It's that we need to hire. And then our special capital projects fund, this is the eight hundred thousand dollars that we're budgeting to the general fund and transfer eight hundred thousand dollars. This is what you have to budget, then. Then, I'm gonna turn to our handouts. With our capital, we put it, it's under page seven, and if you have to. And we can handout. I'm actually wanting to let the, the preference, there's Rob, and we have some of our company's. The total amount that we. Second, I don't know, I don't know.
So, not page seven.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. Well, let's go back, anything, very long. In the general fund, that we.
We heard.
There's one page out. In the general fund, as prepared and represented, there is six hundred eighty-six thousand miles of. Kind of standard amount, sometimes it's called work, sometimes it's fire and burn. This shirt happens to be. And these are one-time purchases, they don't, we don't return, but we do want council to be aware of these purchases. So the very first one, you can actually combine the three in your handout, all three lines are combined. Page your handout. Get right there. We're gonna have that page, and then handout this one, and then that one. I don't know about the, hey, but I'll be sure to do this. That fourth or fifth, we have here, the new kids here, over fifty thousand. But we estimate it will have a place of five fifteen, fifteen year life. And maybe that's the major, one hundred fifty thousand, fifteen year life, and three one from health shots. And in this, they cost fading initiative that Rob has come up with, so we are renting this equipment and Rob will be here.
It's basically about it. I mean, we're renting it at two to almost ten thousand dollars a month for the six months that we do it. Uh, the sidewalk harassment program, which hopefully will be, uh, improving the asphalt paving. That will, uh, infer additional commitment that we need for that program as, as well, so this is the, uh, this is the cost savings that I, I see as, um, uh, saving or whatever by having this equipment in-house. It also then be available, obviously, for the full twelve months out of the year, where it's snowing or a road, and it's for leaf collection. Um, many, 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 many other, uh, services and tasks that we've got to be promoted. What is the general lifespan of these vehicles?
That's the, the, the replacement cycle, that's there's the fifteen for, for the, the, the construction equipment and about ten for the, the drops.
Any other questions on that? You? Thank you for identifying cost savings.
Yeah, it's really that big by down below. It seems like we'll probably save four or five hundred thousand dollars over the life of the vehicle. And the next one is not necessarily about paving, but if someone feels, it's like. And one, that's what she, her, the handout, we keep it, we talk to them. I'll start with Hannah. This is a citywide initiative that started back in twenty twenty-one, approved by the council to the thirty-sixth, so it should give a lot of emphasis around the city. Uh, we have completed phase one as well as the school phase, and we're able to complete the school phase, we need grant to be received, or seven five percent of funding. We did plan to do the retail phase in twenty twenty-three, however, we ran into some firework concerns, so we allocated those funds to make sure that that firework is there. So we anticipate doing a retail phase now, twenty twenty-four, we will be getting that phase. In regards to the batteries and portable barriers, uh, if we continue to increase special events in the city, there is a concern with the death rate and safety. And we will assist with that greatly, um, as we deploy those, they are able to, uh, be put down and raised up so that we can allow traffic or not allow traffic, and that's important, uh, to know that there are some that are standard, they, they don't move, the other you can actually move, uh, quite freely. Um, this would include eight followers and two gates. And they do have, they don't, we sort of fold off the locks. And then we, we have, we sort of use various city vehicles to block those inventory, which have become kind of like outside of the home, obviously, for all the distance, they live.
So, so, right, this is intended to take place of all of the public works over time, or because they'd be in place and. You can phrase it a little bit, or it's still public works, but it's not using of vehicles?
This would be. A little bit of both, but we still think somebody deploying them, but it's a blind person. It's a trailer, the transport center, and a jack to, or to hold it out. Second, you can see a great reduction in overtime for sure, completing that even completely.
Okay, is there coordination of this purchasing effort with the overhaul of the special events policy?
Well, they kind of go ahead, yeah, because, yeah, yeah, this is a part of that's longer term solution, especially with that thing. Whether it's parades, or it's, I don't know, it's any other, I remember, we, why would this?
I guess what I'm saying is I'm not against the idea of getting ahead and getting the right equipment that we need, but, um, there is a difference between the parade that happens once a year, all, all parades happen once a year, and other events that happen weekly, and what they need and who should pay for that. So I don't, I just want the council to be clear about, we would have these resources, but the policies surrounding use of them have got to be clarified in a.
Certainly.
I, I mean, and they have to be, or we're gonna be in the same Jewish.
Uh, with that, this is not a motion, and we're not voting, obviously, I, I feel like the one-time events are, can be absorbed, it's to the benefit. This is referring, uh, events or business expense, whether they could be cost sharing or cost damage, or, uh, equipment and manpower and something. It shouldn't be on the third.
I wish you would, you'd write something out, though. Do I purchase something and write them out?
That would be a policy to assume that they have to recommend. I don't know that that would be what their staff would recommend, but certainly they belong to us. And whatever their overall special events policy will say, that we will provide the barricades for certain events, because these parade, or these nonprofits, et cetera, can't get the companies to actually do the work. But we'll still need to maintain safety. I don't know how that will shape.
It's going, it's going to take some ripple discussion between the staff, or the police, and the public works, and in particular, those factors, uh, who businesses down town. That, that are part of the solution as opposed to. Right, we have to look at every alternative. Street closures are, are difficult. Uh, and we do it weekly, do it weekly, and, and in some cases, it makes sense, some cases we don't. Um, you know, Fifth Avenue, this is where, this is a twenty-one, old, blue area, Fifth Avenue as it exists today. You know, we have to explore whether or not it should be, should be, or just a long street, it should be closed, right? Because we're closing, it's closing, and most of the, we work a year. So, I mean, it doesn't really even retail, so there's a lot of things we thought about in terms of how to make that more. Parking lot that's gravel, that my code has to be resurfaced, you know, and they're using it for parking today, that has to be resurfaced, that is the city code. So, and that's an expensive there, and it's not inexpensive, so all those are the kind of discussions we want. And we're gonna have that over the winter, long before we get into the spring, if that section starts.
That's my question.
Thank you. Um, for the low opening, both stations, are those, um, portable, or are they fixed for parking lots?
All of those are portable, because it's all going to be, we're gonna have the station, the specific places that they did get by. Those are all going to be loaded into a trailer and equally as necessary or as requested, so, uh, as referenced here, we've had to close down parking lots on some occasions due to criminal activity. And that's showing a city vehicle paving in that place. That could be vandalized, could be, I mean, you don't know when you're doing criminal activities, so this would all take the time to that, like, much more costly.
As a follow-up, at least we all will be permanently in a parking lot that if you, that, that was.
I don't want to say permanent, but yes, yeah.
Yeah, they can just reside there and move.
Yes, absolutely.
I just want to clarify, it's a, it's not all criminal activity. Due to characters, and yes, there has been some, but some of it is literally just managing human beings that are out, but they're not supposed to be. There's not always criminal activity happening, but it is people managing and armed. I just want to put some love to you on that race.
Oh, okay.
Probably don't think you know. I'm sorry, there's another thing, yeah.
Um. So, as, as we look at this, this listing craft deed thirty miles per hour, is, I'm just trying to understand. For a normal term, right, thinking of parking lot, this and that, and just kind of, we're not through here, this, this works well, let's, for the picture. But I'm just concerned if, if what we're actually addressing here is a vehicle war attack, and Chief has spoken about that, and I, and and I believe and agree that that is a completely concern. Is this enough, like, when, when is this at thirty, is that saying it's thirty without moving, but if, if they come faster, they're gonna, they're moving the dollar, like, how does that part play out? Instead of vehicle war attack, I would not put, only putting yourself.
I am back to the verge of people. Understanding of that, that even at thirty miles an hour, if they were to be seeing that, it's still going to slow down that, in that. So you're not gonna have somebody there waiting through, if they could be lost for our, that's when you can stop that penetration, they have a crowd, uh, let's. At that area mark, it's at least make them, then put maybe into that, that higher probably, or two G vault, or golden mission, if that would be fine. I'm just maybe basing it.
Let's go back.
Go back to these cameras. I've said before, I'm not a big fan of these cameras. But I, I do see a need for a place on South Park. People used to go to South Park, a lot of crime happened. Or, it's not so much now, uh, with, because nobody goes there, but, uh, I mean, with some of these other businesses, they, they. I mean, well, some of these other businesses, they may have requested these, they may or may. If they like a perk for these businesses that have these or more providing.
No, I would not pay that as a piece of stock area, but we are high traffic areas where we were signing to.
Lot of shop locations.
Sure, if it's practical limits, also allow them to. The rubber city, if we do have an incident, that we can pull up a very famous to help the city. To help us in the investigation process and.
Okay, thank you.
They're they're all fighting.
Good.
Yeah, I can think of work reiterating this, that. Shoulders and Mr. O'Brien's step this is about the need of all these camera footage. They cannot just access them on purpose. And generally, there has to be probable cause, related to an incident or a crime or something in order to always access those people. And that and that's that knowledge and the way of law, who is accessing the word of the law. It's our protections that that make me feel a lot better about it. Uh, and and the fact that even though we called the citywide program, it really still is spots. If we were talking about putting one in every intersection.
I would also just, just as an observation, I know that ID has stationed now workers who all they do is watch for people coming and going and shoplifting. They've closed off one side of the registers at certain times of the day so that there's only people coming in and out of another. And I I feel that especially at that location, that business is doing their part to try and track down those. Um, and so if we are there additional coverage for anything that does. Makes sense.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Schmidt mentioned that um cameras can be accessed by just anybody. If there are all things that would be in place that uh. Call that out, like could be active, but for what reason?
Wouldn't it already be there that there is space that?
Probably a lot of that. Like it's still. So he's watching everyone.
Certainly.
I believe that would like to stay long too, that I, it is a lot of.
So what is needed from us? Items that are purchases were informing us, but we've also offered some.
As the age down, you're gonna change one motion and if you want to break apart. You can motion it and you can make several measures again. So the buyer, there's one more, I think there are only three, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Although that in one place has a long amount of money. And you have to have that twenty to thirty thousand dollars in the company. And if you have a king, you strength, the million dollars, the people say. The property there is giving. And yeah, I don't think you can.
Council, any further comments or questions about um any of these items that have been presented in the casual, or excuse me, general fund number six?
Uh, will this be a perfect time to uh motion for convening this event?
Think so.
Well, with so, I'd like to make a motion to contribute thirty five thousand to the human health program, or to uh where you're sheltered. Second.
Motion by Oliver person Timmy and second by Paul person Schmidt, discussion. That's.
Yeah, I just, this is a, I think it's a great use of money for police use of, in all cities. This is a very minimal show. Yeah, and I think this is a great example of where our regional approach makes more sense. I think we wouldn't want to have to set up our own shelter, we wouldn't want it serving the whole region to decide those resources. My understanding that mowing does not necessarily contribute our fair share all over the past, but some other kind of need to start from step up. And continues order to improve on the program.
Oh, I, nothing to do with that.
Oh, okay.
I've got a key.
Yes, could you please pay the council on your.
Yes, uh, speaking to this issue, very unsure. Yesterday afternoon, all the mayors who had, well, as the managers and administrators had a discussion. Uh, one point, chamber being one, which did not just resolve. But then the whole issue came up about funding free services. And uh and it's all over the boards, terms of what people are willing to do now. And a general takeaway is is that do something, yes, to the degree that's been requested, absolutely not. Uh, there's about a dozen questions that were raised by the mayors themselves, who are very familiar with, you know, this organization and what they're doing. Committed to, uh, the general takeaway was is that the questions would be posed to you know, the health services. Those responses would be brought back uh to the mayors with moderation and then determination on how what the forward with the funding. When the big question that came out of it is is that it's a two hundred and seventy five thousand dollar budget. Each city gave five thousand dollars prior year, prior two years, which is not a lot of money. And there's this huge gap, they want to know why. What did they not do which resulted in two hundred thousand dollar shortfall? So there's a lot there and there's a lot of history behind this that any of us that are familiar with. Or then in two years, we just simply gave five thousand here. So they're doing a deep dive into what's going on with services and why they waited so long to make the cost. Shortfall is still missing. So I'm getting a clear read of that important, rock diamond important, that you know, this point, or is more, is more than is in five. Just I, that's all we have for it. So so they're into the five, so I I will bring back more information on this, but I just, I have to share the.
This is, sorry, this is from part three. And we had a, we had a twenty thirty.
Alright, sorry. You guys have a question, if they're not, right now, they're still bothering. What is the plan, the right leader is right at home, so are we gonna let these people freeze to death in the street, I mean?
No, no.
So what what is their plan, what do they think that they can do short term?
Mayor Benson and uh and his manager Matt with uh in advance of our meeting this week. You know, and they were saying, oh, we don't have the money, but I know number one, I've been open to better shelter. So at the end of that discussion, well, number one actually came December, like allowing more time for a decision to happen. So it's very likely the mayors will end up calling a special meeting, by state is gathering response uh from humility. Once that response is had, then there will be a meeting that will be called a regular monthly game, call special meeting. They'll get together and deliberate and call for an answer. Uh, number they, there was no solid number of that important, but you know, the two hundred was no. It was not polite, no, and then I want to see uh maybe thirty thousand. Twenty thousand, forty maybe, but no firm number of them all of them. City's having, of course, is the largest contributor. You know, and then if they did bring out that signature, yeah, this is just a number that was tossed out, this is sixty seven percent of people that are using shelter are actually the common club. And then was brought up like.
Where did that stat come from?
I don't know. I hope it's fair, but I have to verify. So I, it was just one of those meetings that, you know, that to be honest, we never had, you know, it wasn't even. So chamber issues and issues with the women's shelter, clearly got out of there, so.
I think regardless of where those cities are at, you guys get to decide what you want your money to speak for. Um, and if we have it and we're not using it, what does that say about values, et cetera? Um, what does that say in terms of helping businesses and and the general downtown? Et cetera, where, but what, it's not even just downtown, they're sheltering all over the cities. Um, so it's really up to you all where you want money to go. And if for some reason they weren't able to open, they wouldn't have been hoping out to the money, correct? We wouldn't even go out.
If they know, so another question, well, we give them the money, but we don't have, oh, we can't give them two thousand, they want their money. So it's, it's all in the air. There's only a street here that just pre takes all of us. I think we just have to wait and see, but I agree with the man, you know, they brought it up. Oh, you know, I said, yeah, we can't believe what we're doing. And and you know, like, well, sure, it's all back and waiting, like, no, made a choice, we made a decision, you know, so. That's what we want, so they know that the council would go to him for that twenty thousand dollars. You know, they don't know anything about her motion now, but all it's, I think they're, I think.
Be ready for the.
They looked at uh, it's obvious that they should share over there while we're waiting.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, I, I appreciate all of the information and I appreciate that there are more complicated parts of this question. I believe we should continue on that, making that application, honoring that situation, knowing, of course, that you'll be. Or that check is probably ensuring that those that are going to go lineup, I think. To me, setting and saying back to that money in New York, absolute worst case in this scenario is it does not go up to go again to find another new support in the state. Uh, but I would rather CSA at that point, we can offer that support and step up as we work through whatever issues.
Mr. C S A.
I got all the issues.
And then uh they they might be struggling, I imagine with this organization, not probably, they'll struggle all the time. Um, where they may set up.
That's all.
I will say, humility homes, as you've heard in the presentation, has many houses that they want in whole itself. So it's not like helping that with the winter shelter specifically, doesn't so help them in general. Alright, if there's nothing further, uh, we'll take a vote on this, uh, motion to give thirty five thousand dollars out of the twenty twenty three council budget to.
Other person would see us, what's that? And you?
Hi.
Then Ryan?
Hi.
Bachelor?
That's unanimously, thank you for monitoring that situation.
I will be very.
So we're back to needing a motion on the general fund recommendations here, item number six, outside of the budget. Yes, from the reputation.
Yes. As if we make that motion and then if we later, in the conversation, so they realize something, in fact, will change to that. We would just be able to make that motion at that time, change on the proof there.
Yeah, we can, we we can make changes all the way through a budget adoption on a regular.
So that I would make a motion to approve the general fund. With the exception of the inclusion of the asphalt program.
Um, I'm gonna second.
Yes. Motion voted seconded by O'Brien. Motion to approve this general fund by Lucy Aswell. Discussion.
As I said, I'm not a big fan of these cameras everywhere, but I know that. And the police department probably has tracked this, a lot, most of the crimes, murders. Got uh, you know, road rage, a lot of assaults happen in South Park. I am personally a victim of a couple of different scenarios where there was crime in the parking lot. I'll go into that there, so I will be supporting the cameras. I don't want to pull that skid loader since he sets for that damn asphalt machine, but I think I'll leave that in too, since you've got other uses. That's all.
That's Mr. Resad.
I would stop and uh because it is, uh, we leave it, we see who we deal with, we call, call two thousand five five.
Any further from the council on those items? Very good done, please.
Hi.
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 Alright, so then we have the item of the budget funds enhanced asphalt program for a hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, who?
By uh Timmy and second by Fish, um, discussion. I want to ask, go ahead.
I just, so if you do need somebody to come in and clean up, you're gonna contract that out?
Just you're talking about the drying.
If you need it ground down, they're gonna have to contract it just specifically to come in, grind that out.
That, I don't see that that happening very frequently, but yeah, if you did, that's that's probably where we wind up. Uh, you can also rent uh an attachment for like states here, uh, that would also grind.
So that's probably gonna, is is rental, yeah, potentially in spots.
A lot of this, where we're talking about, you know, there were, we're gonna be cutting and removing and and repairing actually the base of the the uh. It's underneath the pavement as well, so it's not just as simple as even the 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 grinding and. Sorry, I thought it's a more over that.
Right, further, Mr. Smith.
I totally agree with it. The the majority of this is on the engines of roads, which is cheap, primarily due to waterfall and and the erosion that occurs. It the driving is a factor, the uh power surge, period rate, this allows us to spend the life of the roads by ten years. Uh, get a spot up, you see, I have. Doing this not by hand with the machine, you can mark, you can be cleaner, so it's less likely to be period rate. Seeing who prepares, not perfect, so they do, they suffer a problem. Just overall, I think a great possibility.
When you tell me it's only gonna be used on the edges of the road, it sounds like a cam. We know that what's gonna happen.
Now, i- if this machine's not practical for larger jobs, right, and it's not in our best interest, even trying to make it, uh, you know, count that, are you know?
That's correct, this, they they call this machine in in the industry a cart path machine, so it's it's only, it's maximum with the seventy.
And I'm, I'm, who's more than over there, uh, I, I want to figure that.
Alright, there's something further, you have both of please on the asphalt program.
Other person would see us, oh, what's that? Timmy?
Hi.
Hi, Ryan?
Hey.
Bachelor, hi.
Uh, seven to one. Yeah, so at this time, it's been about two hours, I think we should take a very short break. Um, and we move to the next page, I'll see you back here at ten ten. Drew, to get Drew. In the next um segment of time, everyone take your seats, please. We'll move to number seven, capital group of projects, there's no action needed, but you're on.
If they launch this bathroom door up. Thank you. And first to take note, twenty four million, what was adopted back in the line. One million, six hundred is ninety thousand dollars. Can be drafted out. Please, down. If you put all of our principal equipment and excuse your group, it's also some kind of job to go. Home pay or favorite, it's pulled up thirty seven. Home pay or favorite is pulled up thirty seven. And just to present with respect, when you say that there's a wonderful.
Maybe, um. Like they just come back to, now, it's not up there now, but you're looking at the chart, basically, the. All the different funding sources. You can see clearly the armpod downs, how significant they are, the bar graph. And you can see as as we progress, you get the twenty six, thirty no more hurdles. We'll replace it with the basic all special revenue. Help, so it's also a law. So we can maintain that momentum by using ultimate source of revenue.
Yeah, so just again, I do, I. You all know my my re- packages. Sure, it is, it is, but but what we're doing is by looking at the. Right? We are preparing for the future, not only because we have massive products like the riverfront. Um, redevelopment, but also because our business is going to get.
That way we.
There's.
Yes, it it helps us to address the city's infrastructure first and foremost.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right, thank you for that from the council. No, we move to number eight.
And this is our next plan and framework theme, the general fund that we just went. Since we're all the first like that, that's the general fund, and we just spent enough, the capital portion, now we can do. New set of special projects, which twenty one. And as we start this discussion, if I know we all live in the franchise. I do want to. But we originally were willing to be. This was a method to show you all of this unfunded projects that we identified. This was a method that we kind of all in. So if you wanted to fund all of the projects. Is one method that would work to give a fund down. And then we, and we would use all of the types of revenue that would be available, we felt the most viable option. In combination with property taxes, which we actually, figuring a new franchise scheme, which would write away. Chopper against midmarriage and then potentially, potentially the one that you. Those, um, new revenue sources at different rates would be able to fund all of the doubts in. Power, that time talking down, if you are in the first project, as well as upwards of thirteen million dollars of new money available for. The M P A S K, planning to be given back, we do a way that we can open partner, public private partner hits. That is the, that is history on how we need to start with that, it was all in the plan. Look at the, uh, listen to you, we were all thinking, how are we ever gonna do that? Now. Which priorities are, which projects are the.
Okay.
Deliverations.
Time for deliberation.
Uh, well, we need to make motions now, or we, all right, and I would like to make a motion for all the pot of lot brands and your product. From the.
Seconded by. Two. I can't see your. All right, discussion. Mr. Timmy, I'm assuming.
Uh, yes, I I've I've sent an email to the council about this. I I have a number of reasons I don't support the project, discussion, the climate break. Uh, one of which is that I don't feel appropriate to burn the future councils with place like costs. I feel like that's might not be a high priority, uh, considering budget constraints. And there are a number of other unfunded projects that have been fed by the public, that I feel are higher. Uh, long term, might just be a priority for the council, probably, with climate change and the increase rate all, and so it is. The number one priority for us could be throwing one point eight million dollars. Understanding, of course, we're coming here to make a new program, so I feel.
I agree, I think, uh, um. I have heard, um, several neighbors. Support for other things and that for that, it's awful, I think eventually public will have to do it, and it's not sure that it's.
You can see this is probably going down the lanes. Gotta say, that was that. We're saying notice of revenue tells. Any one thing. Ballparks go downhill. And right now, I I I don't think we should project. We don't really know how much we're losing, we don't do this, we will lose revenue. Making our ballparks usable certain times of year.
By contrast to that, we're already losing. Across the river, they're building it into it. Already that, right? Um, this is akin to investing in, uh, new tile floors as our part. Sometimes things change, you know, it's out of our control, that opens wide use. Uh, but by also, we were told that this thing is almost wholly utilized per. Uh, and whether they're available, so there will always be teams that are outside. And I think that we can offer them, and I don't know if it's necessarily in our best interest to. Chase, uh, eight thousand dollars of revenue that it costs one twenty eighty dollars. And I would prefer that the change of Congress, if it's such a huge revenue proper, would be on board.
To to the revenue point, um, pickleball, the original pickleball posting was already mentioned to us as a revenue driver. So Quads Cities knows about that as well, and this, from what I recall, supported that. It was already in the queue to to upgrade our tennis courts, as was soccer footsall. Um, this is jumping the line, and I don't think that that, I think what I'm hearing from what you're saying is, Timmy, is we shouldn't push it forward in that. Mr. Ryan.
Yes, I I, uh, certainly, I love friends, you know, I love to have my, uh, you think about it like a food club. Uh, yeah, you get to this town, do it and whatnot, but you still can, you can, uh, and I'm all supportive of generating revenue, um, for revenues. This, yeah, it's really, it's. That is something that really. You might put there, then, it's not that we as all two thousand, like we have none.
So what, uh, once again, this is something, uh, Moline traditionally has been the main place for baseball, green ballot park. It's been, uh, draw, big draw tournaments, this is something that New York, this is more a pick and pop on and continue to do that. I hate when I, I hate to see stuff go to Iowa, no offense to you people that live in Iowa. We really need to structure the unit. Uh, but, uh, this is something that's a traditional Moline thing. It is well known for baseball, draw tournaments, hotel motel decks, dollars that were. We might still see that, uh, tournaments are better, but I I I just feel like we should. If we can continue to get the people coming here, they're gonna more likely spend money inside.
I I do feel that in some ways echo Mr. Ryan's response, the idea that that we could not continue to support it now. Because I think green ballot is revenue generator, city versus city, this is an important part of our infrastructure. And I think this is a product that should be included, I think that as the partners or the sport looks at that, probably we have to, in their budgets. Is gonna be the best way to pursue that opportunity in action. Uh, and and really it is to me only a matter of, we had other, we had many other priorities, many of them in the parks. That just were here, and I think this does remain an important one, and I think it's a shoe of it, go away, but it's just.
If there's something further, roll call, please, we're drawing an outlet grant to this item. Other person to see us? Is that?
I will.
Timmy?
Hi.
Then?
Hi.
Or Ryan?
Hey.
Castro?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Um, yeah, Mr. Smith.
Your Honor, I make a motion to remove budgets from the land, but to leave that in any section for, uh.
All right, so that's a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Castro to remove budget by the state park, leaving the dollars in these two columns. But leave it in the planning under okay as many.
I believe in this project is not a change. I think looking at it today compared to where we looked at it a few months ago, that opportunity has shifted drastically and makes it very difficult at this time. We were looking at a much smaller price tag, uh, what we estimated originally, we made it a lot easier of something to keep in the budget. We were looking at, also, this was prior to inherited purchase, prior to us knowing that the fire station wasn't needed. And I just think when I look at that balance of these costs. Other priorities that I think are so critical to all of our citizens, we look at the fact that we are still up. Just right on the baseline, among this pool of projects. Uh, I don't wanna see this skate park, I don't, I don't want to see this kind of premier skate park, because we knew it as a one off higher thing, as David, you know, you're doing it this time, you feel this theater is not home. And I think it was a good work for how you. Because it's the thing I've been, I've thought about.
Further?
So we're not being completely efficient, or we're being able to pay out that.
But and this would take the the budget dollars of that out, would it, how would we be in that list of things that had no value? And it's all a list of consideration.
So it's not disappearing from this chart, uh, funded for special projects, but then down the dollar, taking the money out of leaving it.
Yeah, and I'm not just saying money, put it back in, I would not have this considered.
But there's nothing further from the council, roll call, please, other person to see us?
Hi.
Zach?
Hi.
Timmy?
Hi.
Then? Ryan?
Hi.
Castro?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Um, if there's further, there are special capital projects.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to decrease the N F four asphalt option, uh, from one point three million, one hundred and seven. In twenty five. Twenty five.
That could you, uh.
Seven.
I think you will motion right to me and seconded by Schmidt. Especially.
The hundred and seventy thousand dollars is the, uh, uh, resurfacing option price that was presented to us. And so instead of going for the complete concrete or asphalt. That was the budget I made in the presentation, one point three for the top line, I voted for the bottom line, which would just resurface.
Any discussion?
Your Honor, do you want us to do those two options again, the differences between those?
Yeah, so, uh, on the, on the chart that you guys have, the one point. Uh, the one point three eight is the post-hension concrete, which is more accessible for asphalt overall, not butter, like cycle, less cracking. Uh, at two hundred and fifty thousand, if you're to remove the, the, we didn't start the tennis. Probably should either double, maybe possibly triple, but footsall, because, uh, there's quite a bunch of stadiums that are doing, uh, footsall and the tennis at the same time, because all the machines are here. Uh, but the footsall, a much larger product, or a much smaller product, that price is gonna go up so much, and what's the market? A hundred and fifty, uh, or a hundred and seventy thousand, my whole work, which can even say it's just filling in cracks and repeating existing telescopes. Uh, which is like a five to seven year, uh, that's.
I think that we are on a path, what we're trying to, like, we talked about. I didn't, let's say, my, but even if we invest in this, this is kind of a bigger project, this is a larger investment. Take that fine end, right, let's say, what we. I think I would like to see us go longer terms, especially with this, move forward, uh, that sort of, as, and additionally with that added cost savings.
So does that make any difference, or seconded the motion here, just being against?
Yeah, I seconded it.
We're discussing, yeah, I just.
Um, I I just had a question, um, can you repeat, and I apologize, how long was the, did you resurface, just resurfaced it? What was the, um, lifespan of that compared to completely doing it?
So they say on average five to seven years, but we resurfaced back in, like, seventeen years or eighteen years. Back then, and we started this discussion back in twenty twenty one, and the courts were arguing, showing pretty bad cracking again, so really. Says five to seven, but because the courts are so old, that five to seven continues to go down and down.
And you have mentioned before, though, if we, um, there were some tournaments that, um, we were, um, they were looking at possibly, even if we judged it, certain things still could get. That's, I mean, that that would be still good to get those tournaments here, just by.
Yeah, as long as it's done well enough, yes.
Would you say that this would need to be moved up to twenty five? Get that regional.
Yeah, we we have some ongoing discussions about that, but, um, in order to really qualify for the twenty five and twenty six, it would need to be done in twenty four.
All right, well, sorry, any further discussion on Mr. Timmy's option to do the minimum of the minimum, which is just the resurfacing of the.
Uh, I would like to amend the motion.
At the lower.
At the lower.
Second.
Okay, that's amended to. I can mean seconded by, I should, discussion on. Here are none, roll call, please, other person to see us? Zach? And you?
Hi.
Then?
Hi.
Ryan?
May.
Maybe. For me. Which passes, so that amendment. Seven million, yes, discussion.
I just, with the amendment and its stance, I think the amendment to this makes sense if it's gonna go forward. So this is still moving.
So the motion on the floor is to. Go for the tennis court, um, changing it from the one point three eight million allocation to hundred seventy thousand allocation for resurfacing. Moving it to the twenty twenty four million. There's something further, roll call please. All the person see this.
Hi.
Zach.
Hi.
Timmy.
Hi.
Ben.
Hi.
Castro.
Hi.
Schmidt.
May.
Two thousand four three. Okay. Anything further under eight special capital projects?
Um, since we will be um, reducing um, our amount, I make a motion to instead of approving the five percent franchise fee to change that to three percent franchise fee effective one of one twenty seven.
Second.
Like Castro seconded by Timmy. So um, discussion and to clarify that means three percent franchise fee for the time that's in place until something needs to change or something. Yeah.
I just have a clarity on the weather, it's currently off course.
Five, twenty four, three percent and twenty six, and then it was supposed to go up to. Castro's motion, he decided eight percent.
Back of the math, the math is about six hundred thousand for one percent. And so just the cuts we've made today justify that. For the next. And then we can get back on the other schedule and end it out.
I'm still turning around if there are the motion. So because this, and there been a motion prior, there was a motion prior to one point five, there was no motion by council. Or evolution to five percent. We could spend the money. I have a problem spending money. I guess, if you're wrapping your heads. These facilities. Not even talking about them. Wait, central fire station, city hall chambers, those are the things. I think we're all on a green plan and he starts to spend a lot of most. Doesn't look like we're doing a whole lot.
Well, that's partly because the perfect I brought was such a fire station, it's something bonded. Then everything else does have a plan, correct? Where did, you wanna clarify?
Central firework, fire bonding. A five percent franchise fee, we didn't rationalize it up. It becomes a principal and interesting thing to hang on those. Start in twenty twenty eight and right now without upping that. Potentially maybe that's.
So then when I asked that question via email, you said you didn't actually have to up it to five percent until twenty thirty.
They do push within the.
Oh. Yes.
So I'm not sure that I oppose franchise fee increases at that time. But I'm definitely not setting a tax increase for twenty twenty seven today. I will have no on anything that would set us, I mean, we're not gonna hear or two about that as far as I think we should go. We can approve a ready direction and then last step that we just go up. We think they're gonna need this and that, but we have to be a lot closer to driving where I can say we're going to be at.
As it currently stands, it is definitely. So if we if we wanna do amended thing, like five in perpetuity and bill or whatever.
Actually, that means I'm supporting that for a motion because promotion is to keep it at three, then we go go for different.
Alright, if there's nothing further, roll call please on keeping the franchise fee at three percent, starting on. All the person see this.
Hi.
Zach. Timmy.
Hi.
Ben.
Hi.
Ryan.
May.
Castro.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Hi.
That motion passes. So that takes care of your red and requested motion on that item. Or anything else the council is proposing under special capital profits?
As we look at the special capital, uh, and I don't, I don't expect to be able to make any sort of motion on this today, but. I would like us to see this updated because we've had a lot of utilities we've explored out, and if we could delay even the one point five percent franchise fee. We're already very different, what we're asking about. We've made some changes to how. I don't know that it's gonna be enough to justify making that decision, but I would ask. That's. Don't make a motion if I don't, I don't have that condition.
Yes.
There's been some discussion of pushing fire station that one year. Any extra, um, any of them that low, maybe or or. Maybe get that down, I mean, that's that's handling, but they're a little bit high. Is that going to deter, is that bad or good? I mean, that's uh, I think Harold maybe chief about that.
I'll jump in there and then I want chief to jump in because, you know, part of the issue that we're dealing with. That's really like road full discussions with the boiler system and the cost then. Two, but we actually started forward with the plan, the higher front, help them do the assessment, the location analysis, going to go to the station. What would it take to fix that? And that was, if I'm wrong, Sarah, you're sitting at the back, it's like eighty million dollar.
Something like that, yeah.
Somewhere eighty million, that's nine, where we saw interest rates go up. Prices and everything go off, we're looking at probably fifteen, sixteen. And and that number is. While while interest rates go up, we had bond rates in twos, now bond rates are in fours. So there's a lot of variables that have been playing against us, but there's still the need, is that ever present need of. Chief can speak to conditions, day to day conditions there, I don't live there, like there's issues, but you know, there are concerns about heating and air conditioning in that building. And and my biggest fear is is that we're gonna end up on an emergency basis, having to replace that boiler system if we're gonna keep them. Just since that's been happened. You know, because now they're custom making parts because the parts don't exist. So we're actually paying big money to create parts on hold or fix up basically on the panel. So chief, why don't you speak a little bit to the council and share with.
Everything that I was gonna say, uh, just you ask this question, it's the day to day operations, I think it was a little misleading. When uh, FTM presented at a recent council meeting. And uh, Jason had mentioned, you know, eight million dollar renovation, that was just for renovation, that didn't include the additional eight million dollars. For the H I system that we have, so we're we're talking sixteen to twenty million dollars just to renovate that for the station. The H I system was valid for a week and a half. Uh, last year it closed part of it, uh, we were kind of, the station was facing everybody's bedrooms. So we had significant issues with that, that building, we do that. Boiler system right now has a pump, um, that collects water that leaks from it, so that it doesn't uh, uh, drip down with the mechanical, the electrical. Version of that, so we we have significant issues with that building and and my concern is even getting it sorted.
And just to come. This is really not about preventative maintenance not happening, this is truly more about just the age in. Has to do with the number of years of function around the car. So maintenance was done, but couldn't keep up with something that would.
I just wanted to um, just touch on something that I heard um, that the the fire writers live here, live there, it's, they sleep there, they eat there. So, you know, it's just a big morale, I mean, a morale thing for them, I don't think we should.
Maybe um, the library could correct me on this. Kinda new, used to know it because I voted against this library. I think the the number of units uh, actually costs more than the cost of building this library. Sixteen million dollars, just just for renovations, that's that's more than the cost of building a building we're sitting.
Ten million.
Yeah, ten million, I was saying ten million.
I uh, I don't wanna see it moving this project back. Or it's priced to sell. It's it's an important part of our workforce is supporting that and making sure also like, I mean, our party is in the wrong spot. And it's gonna get more and more in the wrong spot every year, except where. Prep all those things. I do think we can, uh, we must take a look back at that to say, hey, is there, are there ways to, it's the cost on the station, I mean. Is this the plan we need, where can we go back, where can we cut those costs? With it being so far out of. So, or look at phase, right, if there's a, we really want this, but it can be built five years later, you build that into the plan upfront, right? Then it makes it a lot easier to, if we feel something else, and all those options out. Uh, I also know that my assistant, I mean, such a high priority is probably gonna prevent us from changing franchise fees, so we're not fighting itself there.
You cannot fault my words. That is something one man give, you have to enjoy it, you have to leave it, or that's. So we cannot play back any. So I agree with next to us.
Um, so uh, keeping it, wait, you know, there is no.
No, I should help that.
Well, yeah, I very consented that we should not mess with this item at all, it is a high priority. And um, we need to continue to find ways to pay more. I will say though, I think that it's smart that we continue to have very little debt if we're going to be looking at a massive bonding project like this, correct? That will work in our favor when it comes to what what can we build, public can we build, public can the, the dream can we see or realize. Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
And um. A method involved changing like funds, moving to a revenue.
Right, okay, so we have a bigger shot of you coming through. I think potentially more will become clear as we move to the C L R S, but are there any other things we can do?
Two, one, just an indirect response to what the partners just shared. I believe when our fund policy is stopping us from making smart long term decisions, we should. Bring it to council, tell us it's a violation, we'll approve when it makes that sense, because as you said, by us saving that money in excess of what may be a fund policy. It allows us to reduce that model, which is saving so much money for us in the long term. So please continue to not let that fund policy get in the way of us making actual sound policy decisions. Or at least how our guidance around set policy. The other thing on on the item, uh, I'm concerned that our sheet is now outdated, particularly on footsaw project. That's what I asked them, do we see, um, that updated? Because we now know that with what we did for this tennis project, that cost will be very different, I guess, I should confirm that and bring that back.
I think we have addressed all bullet points in number eight. Number nine, please. Our applications.
That part is on location. There are no specified materials on the table, but I do want to go through it again. If you know, not to identify all the projects that we engineer from four, if we have already. Based on Tiki, um, that's my just put a highlight on the item that has been read, one point two four. And I mean, I could be on wrong, but I. One of the things that just changed was allocation. Uh, the N T D C, which is potentially extended one more year of. Now that actually linked on mixed items down below for the agent fee. And then the five ways. So that we actually reduce that funding level down and we mix match some other funds available, we have two million dollars. But one of them is other five ways. I'll have two billion dollars for blood donation that will go towards the. And moving down and that is unrestricted money. Restricted, then we had had nod to pay a hundred eighty five thousand dollars. Out of the child there. About the application in that M two. And so sorry, I'm. No, the asphalt.
I I made a statement a few weeks ago, but this is the uh, five ways we want to. Fifty C I S. We're grabbing, that's not ours. I just wanted to make sure I'm. I don't remember the name.
Triple check. Call that.
And and that would actually follow by, I think you can follow by that, I mean, it's restricted as well, we have really valid opportunities. That can be the fifteen for, let's take fifty for that, out of that one eighty five.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
A question on the the arsenal of lack in elevation. My my concern is. Is as far as like, I love, and we know that this is a private. All supported. I'm a concern, are we going to do that project in that timeline of where we got. That point if we would be able to secure that funding, if we can say, well, no, it's too long spent, that's.
They 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 dwell with the brand funding that we pursue, which is fair, fair, there is the lion's share, it's costly to be paying. Well, it's for the left down structure, we sit. Satisfaction, screen. Once the water can fall. Or we have three, five or six years, five, it's five years in order to start a non-ven, we can drive that. Cost. Lost the cost. But it's on the law. We won't, I won't take that.
So, this is in those unrestricted time board, so, uh, we've in charge this, just like we've stopped this program, and we have the. We had five million, so if we need to meet, we will put in a one-year project.
And there's really one of God, we hold on to that one. That'll make me some of yours.
Are there any other questions on the Arba allocation or suggestions? There's not all an entertainer motion to approve the twenty twenty-three. Our allocations.
So.
Or wait. Can't be as presented, you're going to have to make a motion as a, as a, with the C F, C Y F S.
Even though that motion.
Yeah, is it a disclaimer there?
There's no.
Make sure that I'm pleased when it proves. Be able to Tuesday. My other fear is that actually what's going to be presented is not exactly the language when it's structured to the motion. I think if we get approved, I believe we'd be better off to look at the fresh copy of.
The fresh copy of that.
For the.
The charts, schedule the charts, okay, so.
Make a motion to table from Arba program until Tuesday, to a record in time.
Motion, question. Second question, Astro. Discussion. Very. I mean. And.
Right.
Orion. Astro.
Bye.
Right, that, that was, we'll see to that item on Tuesday. Number ten, aim is to agencies.
Eight, eight hundred.
I'm just going to ask if we're able to table that, if they have, um, agenda already, but we can, uh, it's already.
It's not his agenda.
That's all right. I just, I would, thank you for my considering.
The overall goal for it.
I think you're fine.
Right, just to, it's, uh, first.
Okay, you can come about this, I'm just wanting to. And this is the Kansas agency that, um, as presented for these two ones, New Orleans Center, the N C D C. Chamber, and the visit club city at the front and final percent level, both are all in the budget as.
Other questions? I think I'd like Mr. Bitas to explain, um, that the chamber allocation is related to Riyadh, correct?
Uh, this is our normal chamber attribution for Riyadh.
I didn't want to share with the council about pushing the discussion.
Um, sure.
That you alluded to.
That are relative to the budget.
Yeah, that you alluded to, I'm not sorry.
Sure, um, there, there is a discussion going on at the chamber board, but very specifically it's on the governance. Governance committee of the chamber board, uh, to reduce the size of, not scope, but reduce the size of the chamber board. As it exists today, the chamber board was increased itself. I believe it was pretty worth it to Illinois side, and the most Iowa side to merge to chambers. Uh, the original chamber as opposed to in Illinois and Iowa. Most I did know that. So, uh, it's been merged, it was, uh, part of the merger was, was including, you know, a broader chamber board membership. Because they didn't want to give away seats on either side of the river. Uh, so it got to be a, uh, an oversized governing body, in essence. And now they're at a point as, uh, as they're recruiting in the executive director, they want to try and resolve. Add a shield to the size of the board itself, the membership of them. The other things that happened, uh, probably back in twenty twenty, nineteen or twenty. Uh, they decided that Quad Cities First, which was a regional Quad Cities Development Group. Uh, which was basically, you know, called Corporation, what it was, very common. That they, you know, developed Corporation as Quad Cities First, that that wouldn't be merged into the chamber as well. It is the same thing with Riyadh. It was done for financial reasons in a lot of respects. Uh, because the chamber was actually, you know, fighting for, for revenue. For, for whatever reason. But now they're looking at reducing the size of the board and eliminating. They're having seven governmental members, you should think seven, if they like, word to it as, basically two counties. Then they have a board at the door. And I didn't do so.
And they are.
They are, and they are.
Five months.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, so. Producing the size of the chamber, bringing it down to basically a, a Iowa member, government member, as well as a killer life member. Was also a big part of discussions yesterday with the mayors and the managers. And, uh, it is nowhere near being hammered out, and with your people, so. There is a lot of tugging, shulley going on right now behind the scenes. Uh, we, of course, unlike them, or, I haven't, but, or don't use them, or are you going to develop them all that much? Uh, the others do. So, who sits on the board? Who doesn't sit on the board? Because you do money, does that mean you have a seat on the board or not? You know, and although you were a part of that, that meeting as well, so. Or, yesterday's meeting, the mayors did not come to any conclusion. And the conversation is going to continue, but you just need to be aware of it, and if you don't have. Where are they going to be? Are they going to be in a development organization, which is the leading tendency? Or are they going to support small, medium businesses? Because they're getting credit on SI too, so more to the story, but that's what, it's just an update. We do provide that in sixty-three, that means. Sixty-one thousand five eighty-seven.
Thank you, Simon. Anything further, or you, yes, Mr.?
Um, are we, this is in general, or are we specifically talking?
There is.
In general. I, I, I like the N C D C contribution. I would, uh, hope that in the future we could, uh, after seeing Canada's dollar commitment, I think this is good on having for that. Set upon to that. Funding sources, nothing runs out. You kind of form that up there, plant a seed.
If, if a motion to approve aims to agency, that.
Oh.
None, or all, please? All persons can see it.
Hi.
The doc.
Hi.
Timmy.
Hi.
Ben.
Hi.
Orion.
Hi.
Astro. I.
Hi.
Pete. Group unanimously, eleven, cannabis tax fund. Carol.
Three five.
Three twenty-five.
Yes. Spend your out of season, and, and best we can, yeah. To, uh, yeah, get the credit. And take you a hold of the. And, yeah, actually, no, on the first allocation from Kansas, but it is only for three days.
That's a good number though.
We find it out in three days. Yeah, and the bottom line is, it's been annualized, it's based on brand openings. It could be upwards of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but that is, you know, that is three days, it's not a lot. So, but, I would hope that we would be maybe in this ballpark of five, six hundred thousand. We will be monitoring, you know, as we get in our first three months of August, I'll be, I'm sure, in the beginning. But I think we're still saying, even if we commit at the six hundred and one, or even five hundred, we still have. Yeah, we've got the transfer two things back, or the, the, um, the two people, we will talk about competitors and paying them for the level of. So we still, uh, we will. Obviously, then, occasionally we could show this to.
And also, I'm not, I know there are, uh, public art officials concerned about the, their funding sources. And, correct me if I'm wrong, they will primarily be funded by the two percent, right? So, if there is now, no construction or happening, they won't get funded as much. So, I think it's worth us thinking about potentially making sure they have a baseline every year, the size of the two percent. So, I, I would, that, that, maybe that's for future discussions, since they do have a lot of money left right now. Maybe you want to think about some things for twenty twenty-four, um, out of these funds. I, I guess I need a little more clarity also on the special event fund. I know that that was meant to, um. Support the live, I have that, we have gotten some information back, it's very sketchy from Visit Quad Cities. It's not the full picture, so the best thing we can say is that, oh, I didn't generate any broad spectrum. Increase in activity compared to the year before, or compared to the, um, the week before, and then we get that, week twenty-four, week of that. So I don't think it did what we hoped it could do. I personally don't see the need to support that kind of event every single year. Maybe of a five-year basis. So I'm not sure if this hundred fifty is really something we need to go to special events, or if there are other special events. Stuff had in mind, supporting, I'd rather see it go to the public fair. So. Sir, would you like?
I don't agree, but that's, yeah, and, and, and you don't always agree, but it's all, hey, it's blowing the screen. You know, I, I think it's premature to see, you know, compare the special substantial celebration to what was a not, not. Celebratory moment in cities history. You know, I think there was also problems that he, that that weekend with folks in Iowa looking at the date of their concert, their pop concert. You know, that draws five, six thousand people away. It's, you know, not planned, it just happened. So it's kind of hard to judge what happened, I think, you know, I think as far as the, again, I didn't manage the event, Eric managed the event. Um, you know, the space was ample, the situation was there. Uh, what revenue came in, came in, and Eric spoke that that may have been a chance of our, our roundup discussion. But, yeah, I, I think it's too soon to kill it, that's what I'm hearing you say.
I've been asking for consideration.
And I say, with your hundred fifty-five thousand dollars assigned into certain reality. There, right, we do, public guards, keeping in mind, public guards are sitting at like two hundred thousand dollars. And they're sitting on large change right now, some of which is going to the, you know, that's great. Um, but the mayor is also correct, unless projects happen in that quarter, that's a very limited quarter, right? They only do that two percent. It has to happen in the quarter, but, so, once you change that, right, it'll just lose that kind of, which is outside of order, it's a whole other time. So, yeah, it's my piece.
Thank you. Astro, the question.
Um, I've had a whole, whole lot of nights, um, this year, I got a little bit of a week event, um, do we need to have it in the same scope? Maybe not, I mean, we can, you know, take it down, go one day rather than, rather than two days. Yes, scale, scale it down, but I, I enjoyed the event, and I think that I would, I talked to the, um, enjoyed it all, but, but we don't want to have a two-day event.
I, I have a lot of thoughts about public guards. But, um, because we have a whole.
Yeah.
But I think that is valid.
You.
And, um, so, we haven't had, uh, we haven't been yet?
I was not in the meeting for him. Eric went, which maybe this was your baby.
Yeah, so, uh, we have not, we, we have, uh, the information that we requested for this event. I thought we were requesting the same apples to apples as we were the previous year, and it turns out after talking to Tori, that we were not. And so we re-requested that, uh, for this event. And that was about three weeks ago, it usually takes about twenty-one, twenty-eight days to get that information from this event. Quad Cities, so we're still waiting on that one to do, I'll have a read up there.
The biggest thing is, is if you scale back to one day, not, uh, you know, we shouldn't, but. The only cost savings that you're going to have is probably security and some of the bands still have. The setup, teardown of the stages and whatnot. Um, I think the biggest thing, and I can go on more detail, but I think the biggest thing of this event is one. We're at the mercy of the Viber Arena, that we weren't even able to really promote this until June. Because they still want to be able, possibility of booking an event at, uh, the Viber Arena. And so if they would have booked an event, that we did, we would have been displaced somewhere else. So I think we need to not, uh, to get, to make sure that we have that date, so that we can start promoting it. Because we didn't capture, um, the, the people like we did for the one fifty, weren't able to market it properly. And, uh, it just wasn't as installable, and I'm not sure how we, how we fixed that quite yet, uh, the one fifty. I mean, everyone's like, I was like, I want to come and see what that is all about, and I think we need to set ourselves apart differently, uh, in this.
I do know that the Quad Cities want to have a discussion with us, sort of about the model we use and a lot more risk for, for any kind of, um. Problem that, but, um, I, I think we should also be thinking about other places we can have it. Because we really shouldn't be, because marketing is huge, especially with regard to the. The distance we pull people from that aligns with what the Quad Cities has, knows about, what the Quad Cities pulls from, et cetera. We can't, cannot be at the mercy of one organization. Um, Mr. Six.
Sorry, that is not all, but do we know, uh, uh, as far as sponsorships, the money's there? And many that we've gathered sponsorships, that's information that we could probably have.
Yeah, I, I have also that preparation, both of them.
Yeah, and, and, I attended the meeting, because I was in Fort Worth, and, uh, Marcal, it was much, kind of like, much bigger. Second night, the second night I was at three ten ball, and we definitely saw a lot of work, uh. Younger people, spending more money out here, the first night, the second night, it, it's, and I was very, like, at the very end. Uh, but I was sort of, far aside, I don't, it just didn't seem as, it didn't seem, uh, that, that generating.
It's been, would it be more beneficial to use the Bridgepoint area instead of the diverse thing? The Bridgepoint area would be really cool.
You know, over. That's a live building, I mean, that's all.
We need some improvement to save the, the pain, and it's, it's kind of rough, there's, you know, not so that it can be that. That's something that not so much to look into. Dive into that, and obviously, you know, so, the N P S A, uh, study going on, so there's, there's, uh, there are lots of, probably the later preparations.
Good place to run free and practice using that in the paper.
With everything we've heard and what we've experienced, I, I very much want to see, yeah, direction or how that's gonna move forward, one of those improvements. It felt like many of us can't, are moving things, even where it is. Definitely one that, if, there's something that I would consider revisiting, certainly, you know, we're going. Uh, I'd rather us that'll stay in a position, ways to do so, and we'll pull back on that. Um, and I also, uh, one of the pieces we did, yeah, talking about releasing that to two days. If we're having to make that sort of decision, that feels to me like it's just like, it's not. Uh, and, and, and also because of the, the, knowing what those costs, our allocation differences are. So if we feel like it's not working, I think it's okay to say that, to say that, but I think we'll, we'll still plan to attack how we want.
Mr. Sees?
Not related to the fun, but we're kinda discussing this. If nostalgia is a factor, we used to have a River Fest. And I'm not, we did that around the fourth of July, can't do that now with funds. But it went across Holden, Butterworth Parkway, through River Drive, through Fender's, there was a boat parade in the fourth of July. That is a nostalgia draw that would probably, the compliment we're talking, possibly with the concert at the end event, which happened to be Bridgepoint. So it's all connected. That's a bigger ask, you couldn't have sheer, but I think that looking at ways to manage this, that might be, that isn't, there were security concerns, the police. Uh, we canceled it because there was a parade event, which called it back to the stage on River Drive at the same time. And so there were factors.
I think that was a serious personal issue, kind of, yeah, like it was why it began.
And I think there was a stabbing, well, there was a number of reasons, uh, in question. So there's a lot of factors at play here, so.
All right, well, revisit it. Sounds like we're ready to take it from, like, yeah, this one has a two percent, is there a motion?
Maybe you can group.
That was Timmy and Finch expression. Just to clarify, leaving as is, to be determined later on, the special event, so good, and the applicable amounts that are available. Yeah, better projection.
It's, we, we can probably, we did. We did say that we can not, I mean, we can bias with the position, all my money. Or not being, you know, people can't, but hey, with the plan and with the risk, people, you build a plan, you can, you draw. So I don't think, uh, that the position we are making that was created, we don't, and we did the same and all, all we do.
Understood, however, we always end up with amendments in the budget, so if things come, come in later, this can be adjusted. And all the other things, yeah, this one is.
And now I agree with that too, we under allocated the budget and our projections are based on C by Deuces, Canvas Fund, is that correct? This is based on, uh, it is based on a power of the government.
We actually get a little bit of, we can get a small allocation and small office, and that would cover revenue as well. But this, this time, we didn't have the three games since just yesterday. And so we do basically with our mind, we pay for the, we scare what we want. We made some, we. I think it's cool. I just can't figure it all, but I think, I think we do okay. And I'm just saying we can amend it. I think we should have at least enough money for the, I want to come out.
I agree with that, that'd be, uh.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. There's nothing further, we'll call please. I agree with CS, Zach.
I will.
Hi.
All right, over.
Hi. Hi.
And we're here to that hundred million, and that's a big special, that is on. And then the committee actually put this budget together and all the other items in the very holy city, the funding, and it used to be. Getting around adding, being a gentleman, all of them.
This is, that's, that's, that's pretty understandable. Um, so what is the difference between, so I see that Ricardo has the, um, here for twenty thousand dollar allocation. So what's the difference between this allocation and the ones that we saw on previous slides for the, um, um, because we're supposed to like other meetings, and that one with that forty thousand dollars, like they've got a lot of, the, in fact, I mean, I just have a question, what the difference is in the two allocations? There is a very, um. So, and when we were talking about, um, outside agencies, or maybe outside agencies, there was one slide we talked about, um, I, I apologize, there were, let me hide it. Was there like another slide though, that we talked about?
Oh, well, I don't know, that's in part.
Was it, yeah, was it?
In part. Yeah, I think that was how we wanted, that was just, that's all.
That was a good respect, but.
Yeah, but there was, that was just like, that's.
This is a, I don't, any of them.
Forty thousand, we could back it up and literally two thousand, forty two million.
But it was just a one time, yeah, okay. Okay, so any questions or modifications to special events? Eric, um, we take a motion to approve the special event fund as a amendment. I'm sure by the CS, I can hear by Finch, special. Eric, none, we'll call please. All the person we see, it, um, it's up.
Hi.
Timmy.
Hi.
Finch, all right, over.
Hi.
Castro.
Hi.
Ben.
Hi.
Okay, promotion passed, and honestly, we are on the page three. Then trust fund. Area twenty two.
And this really is for informational purposes, I mentioned this here at the beginning. We have a fund that humiliated many different types of revenue, I know the type of state money versus small brands. At least nine of the gadgets of concept age are listed funds, there's some corporate fund, they're strictly, it's very strict, and they're not able to spend it. There's a total bucket of money of, in twenty twenty four, there's about, it's thirty four, about three hundred thousand, which is the year of that. And then there are only fifteen forty, one page down, there is a description of the funds. There is a description of each of the funds that I just wanted to be aware of that, that's different types of public debt. And there's no actually.
Okay. Well, next fourteen.
Yes. And then the tourism fund. And the tourism fund historically was afterings, hotel motel pass, and it's all over conjunction with private, with Luna. Um, those monies have actually bundled, and we do have, we have a contract, correct? And if the mayor paying for that Luna had shortfall, we have to, that is pretty responsible, we have to shortfall. And I just wanna, you can change a niche. Page forty two, we look at it. Then the page number. And, and. As of the end, it are, are projected here to point to me. Cumulated operations are possibly about eight hundred seventy million. So right now, um, we, we are, we're not in a position, in the near future, that we have to be covered in shortfall. And thus, when that tourism budget is down, we.
No, we have, I think.
No, we have, no, it's true.
And you can look along. Probably wanna go on one page. This particular statement goes back to two thousand fourteen. And although in two thousand, no, I shouldn't say although, yeah, there have never been short on any of those ten years. There were the decrease in sixteen, but they had found out adequate gate marks, so they were all, fell off the cap from there.
Yes, and the nice thing is there's representation for the cities on the board for that, so obviously. Of course, for the, so there's always eyes from the city upon the dogs on.
Right. In the case where we weren't, we also see any sort of, oh, interest at that point, or how serious? No, I don't. Uh, but, yeah.
Usually we remain a member.
We would just remain a member, it's a multi jurisdictional, you know, fully, smoothly. But each of us have representatives, and actually sit on, some of those guys have been there. So, yeah, it's, 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 it's a very old board, and financially, they are in, in a good financial position, they have sufficient funding. Capital, it's not necessary, with the port. We, 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 X layout is running a counter, or single greatest event in history of the entire arena, probably would stand like those. That was the, uh, that's sort of every country, the countries that are, really. Morgan.
Morgan.
Morgan Whaling, that, that generated, well, the other event, higher. And there's a lot of factoring that played in, but it was still as a bigger, Morgan Whaling. Currently, we canceled, we can't play, yeah, we're still in the sellout.
Well, they're obviously doing pretty well. I know they had asked us for, uh, they wanted to do like an outside area.
Yeah.
Is that something that's on the radar and now it's, it's been very awkward to do itself?
Um, yes, it has. Uh, the reality is, they have a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar, got a grant that, uh, that, that moved from the Jackson. Yeah, so I'm the only thing, yeah. You know, and, and, and Mayor Freeman was involved with it as well. So, yeah, they have an allocation, seven hundred fifty, project cost was about one point five million, about one point eight right now, cost of goods. But now they're in the process of, the number of these going out, one is the premium, the outdoors, outdoor concert venue project was on the Bray Lawn between the hotel and, and, and that would all become, that's the current, fire, smoking, still the stage, that was, they're working that vendor arrangements. And now we have, you know, outdoor dining, we have outdoor restaurants as well, uh, that's all part of that.
Did we get them on board with our planning folks with Renew and CED for this project?
Then what?
I, I feel like at, at one point in the past, when they were working on this, we had to be like, yo, we need to talk to the city or phone and why some, um, first.
I don't know, I mean, I thought, yeah.
No, they're not ready to talk, but, but yes, like surveys, trying to figure out what they own. But they're gonna be coming back to the city with, uh, I see this very shortly, this survey work was actually just submitted this week, the month to get it done, figure out who will, what. So that's coming forward.
Well, guys, I think, um, in the past, we had not gone forward with any sort of support for that, and I am going to continue to say, I know how I'm a product, it's a wonderful place to go. But I have no interest in the city stepping up, helping pay for any sort of amphitheater presence that close to the S Street. I just, I mean, I support their opportunity to be competitive management, I don't think we should be in business of putting ourselves competitive to ourselves.
He was receiving.
And I think there's, uh, there's more of a kind of three parts for it, so we did accept that down, like way before.
Well, that is not what was presented to us on the amphitheater, but.
Yeah.
That is. It'll be.
Thank you. We're ready to move to number fifteen?
Okay. Each. Actually, we're going to work. It's right, it's, the thing right there, it's moving on. No, not that, it's less, you have to, I believe, go down to the home. And this is actual, I'm pretty sure that we can get better, from their commissioners, the one we know, the balance fund. If you look down, that would rent out like the major, um, four percent, so the project, we originally needed this fund about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars back in December twenty two. Today, they have spent ninety eight hundred in the five city arts, ninety hundred. The people who did cannabis, who will begin this year, will have about seventy five thousand dollars in the, so the revenue. And they do have two bill right now that are outstanding, that can be done. That will be their estimated balance, so beginning twenty two, down to one fifty thousand dollars. Then you can see IQ money, they put it for twenty five and twenty six, the two percent of all high project. That brings their total available, the two hundred and fifty three thousand at the end of twenty six, there's money, so maybe spend that amount, you know, between all the two years. So really, we're getting something.
A lot of the projects that we're working on are, we're ready, these are, uh, programs where every year we swap out, whether it's a mule or a slaughter. And they need to be able to budget accordingly with, uh, the funds they know they're going to have. Obviously, it's just been about a year to be get established, and that's why we decreased the fund last year, but they won't be, I think that would be a perfect reaction. I spoke to the commissioner, they, they're asking that we help fund them at seventy five thousand a year. Uh, which so, uh, this following year is at twenty two ninety two KF, that require act on our, our, the year following, they're reliving sixty six of projects. Uh, our contribution, and, so, and, and so I would like to make a motion to fund the deficit of, uh, up to seventy five thousand from council attendance on, on going. On a ongoing basis. If that is clear.
Is that what you mean just far? Make it work.
Yeah. So should we, how we can begin of your passing, like for the end of the year, from the autumn? We will know how much money they will see with CIP, or maybe we go back to what up to seventy-five. Make a order.
Chris, do you think that's sufficient, uh, so we have to wait until the end of the year before we pull the bill?
Hang on, can we finish the motion and give a second?
First, I'd like to say I have no problem with it. Coming here. I have no idea since that's policy. Setting something where we are automatically drawn down. You just see, you, you treat it as just asking for a layer. Uh, unless you're talking about automatically earmarking seventy-five thousand contingency that we can't access unless. Projects still, I mean, that would be the methodology. I'm not looking at the policy, I don't think this has anything to do with continuing to see a. Way basis, but I would approve saying for coming. I just think if we can do it, address it as it comes, we can set policy directions, but not that's what I. But I'd like to amend my motion to make this, uh, twenty-four within earmark. Call all of this and be debated. Now, let's just worry about twenty-four, update the twenty-four, we can talk about.
So the wording of your amendment. This motion is that. You want to fund any deficit in there, in there, um, up to seventy-five thousand. Um, for a year.
Twenty-four.
Back in my CS. Especially on the amendment code.
You just.
Yes.
Just remember, you're essentially describing. It's, it's amazing. And we're funding twenty twenty-four from the twenty twenty-three contingency.
Is that something we can do?
Okay.
That was my intention, yes.
If the motion as it stands is clear, um, discussion indicates that you would take one. You would have to amend something again if you really wanted to write down. So, we can't amend it amendment, so let's first vote on this, amend the motion. On the, uh, fifty thousand. Or my. Any further discussion? None, roll call please.
All persons see us. Timmy. Robin.
Hi.
Right, is there any further clarity, you'd like to be of, um, the class, will we have a? Did you say no?
No.
Alright, that. Amendment motion passes.
Yeah, I'm getting promoted.
Sorry, we, 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 thank you. Uh, so we're back to the regular motion. Just for, we just wanna make sure there's a whole lot of everybody. Anything further, if you're none, roll call. All persons see us.
Hi. Hi.
Thank you. Move to enhanced rental housing program.
Mayor.
Yes.
Lunch, it's right.
Uh, thank you, we're gonna wait a while. I want, we, we're so close, if we can get through this first page. And then we'll have a couple of other pages left. Thank you. Um. Sixteen, yes, rental housing.
And really, I think, um, I just hope they go again. The meeting, uh. Um, when we get next week, that PTP, I want break in section. Uh, that, here now, we may move in after.
Questions? And then we move to seventeen, Parks and Cats, Charles.
Two thirty-six. Um, you mentioned, um, who will be the balance, we can follow that first amendment. First fund down, is the main policy. Who will be the page and we go down. Top of the page, it's on balance. So in twenty twenty-three, the ending fund balance for parks, that's mean that twenty-one of these. Your main policy, jumping up in twenty-two percent in twenty-four. And twenty-five, twenty-four, eighty, and then we got twenty-six and the end of twenty-six. So then, so. In twenty-four, they come from the one we mentioned. From the very top of the, um, twenty-one year. The tax is there, you can see extra, you can see the credit of the. Down to the charges for services, you'll see a significant jump. From current, you're hoping to be up to seven ninety-three. At the end, of the. And Eric and I have looked back and forth on the numbers, hope that they're conservative. You'll see that, uh. Increase, if you jump down with the cultural recreation expenditure line, it pretty much just offset each other, anything revenue. Anything that's. And then all the rest of the funding is pretty much same. And that annual allocation, it's about six fifty and twenty-five. Then you go down to the blue, uh, Rose Center Highlightment, we have an annual. Press random CIP fund that you are not to have been drawn. This is a lot of it to do with. This is transferred from the general fund, the eight hundred thousand. And that is pretty much it. Parks. Um, and this is the budget that the park, uh, has already got as well, and they are. If you go down two pages. There we go. You will see, this is the list of parks together. For twenty-three, of course, we got the nine point four million that includes the. Although, we are firmly bonded and. And in twenty-four, this is the breakdown of projects of that six hundred and twenty-five thousand. As long as six fifty and six fifty. So the biggest expenditure in twenty-four will be additional, um, firm for. Any questions on the park's amendment?
None, I need a motion to approve the park's fund as a.
I'm sorry, I'm just looking for the. He's been included in the. It's like a blanket that covers a lot.
Yeah, Eric, can you go first?
He said, Paul, please.
So we're currently, uh, about sixty percent of the way done with the, the playground. But budgeted, um, in this choose budget that will probably end up on, um. CIP funds to twenty twenty-four, probably on seventy thousand, uh, remaining to, to be worked at the center part in twenty twenty-four.
Well, this is, I guess this isn't really related, I'm just talking about. That junkyard that's on the other side of it, they call it. It's Carolina Wood. We were looking at. We're gonna wait for Tiff to try and get, all that.
We've got a lot of the park, rent vehicles and boats and, you know, recreational really. Yeah, on the north side of the park.
Cause we're, sir, I know we talked about getting.
So it's gonna be our master plan that we're currently on duty right now. We'll probably have the Tiff funding when that comes on board, but I don't know if people possibly purchase that, like. Our, this is a park's plan, but all's growing up. Yeah.
Alright. Yes.
Um, since we are wanted to, um, withdraw the off bond grant, we need to amend this because we have had included with the capital. Projects.
Or do we just do that?
Oh, you're talking about annual, uh, you know, the, the off bond, the special, the special out of the whole container plan. We did put down there for information that in addition to God on budget, there's no.
But you'll automatically not favor this, based on.
Okay. Yeah. Um, and you're, go ahead, I'm just gonna go, but parks in general, it's just shouting, it's six million now, we're operating the platform in the parks. And there's one final note, it's with Chris Charlie. Clear, so. Two thirty-seven, and if you just look at the very last, um, which you have made a twenty-six. See drop line, there's, that is their outstanding loan, WPC, actually. Cash loan, that project, so the outstanding loan, so.
Parks, thank you. They, they helped from the council, otherwise we're ready to. Uh, entertain a motion to approve the park fund that's presented.
Will be approved.
Okay.
By Brian, second by Finch, discussion? Very none, roll call please.
All persons see us. Timmy.
Hi.
Finch.
Hi. She passes hands, move to library. Each number at least.
Kind of a little here, that all. All the past. Your goal back to twenty twenty-two. And the library, we can keep it in very good shape, the fund balance could be stable. Uh, one hundred and twenty on board. Their fund balance, we can, as well as, in the five to six percent range. And we have built that up, a lot of it is also. Been very, very conservative and was totally big okay. Some of the people that were from council, a lot of the. Amens for the bar. Library, which is being very, very well. Right, giving the main policy to their credit in twenty-six, and they're using some of their years in our favor. One thing I would like to point out in the current year, twenty twenty-three, now the part of the demo, amendments that will go up here at the end. Eighty thousand dollars is the transfer here. That is from the general fund, that's the twenty-five thousand of regular annual funding. And this is. Fifty-five thousand dollars.
Eighteen and fifty-five.
No, twenty-five and fifty.
That help. And then we turn to the next couple of pages, Brian's done a really nice job of highlighting what happened to the library. Library board, like first word around you, this budget. And they're really trying to. Some of the big strategic goal, right, Alvin. Is obviously the development of the library gardens, which comes throughout. Have a question to Brian, he had a nice presentation during the summer, and went through that. And the other strategic goal coming up, it will be to fund the local outreach program, which includes that vehicle. And they're trying to accumulate two hundred to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And they're using that capital that they're talking about coming to. Maybe go. That's the nice power story. No, I love listening to the type of. There you go. Brian's been a nice deep athlete, and I hope the cops will have. Early time chance, we'll have to. Library.
That looks like an amazingly diversified pool of dollars, thank you for that work, that's.
It's pretty.
I have a few people calling my name. Questions from council.
Want to change a motion to approve the library fund as a.
Actually, that's.
So.
It's Finch and Schmidt for the discussion. Very none, roll call please.
All persons see us. Timmy. Finch. Ryan.
We move to nineteen, we can do a two summaries.
It's more with your writing. There you go, two ninety-one. This is showing, we talked about a couple of things, I'm gonna make. Hope as well, this is the projected council venue. To all firms, the greater ring and the never is shown. Council venues that are from the general firm. Think again coming in two thousand thirty, not without. In addition, our CIP fund is down. Up and by, the water fund and WPC, they are also cash advanced money, and the. Um, the biggest one being water, and WPC, and. So as we. Over to that project, this is all of the.
That's a nice question to answer this.
Yeah, yeah.
Not really much.
Watch. And then, go one more. Thank you. These are available project dollars right now. There are a couple of funds that are in the white. Money that can be spent, and it actually has to be spent, and you have to. And the first one is the Gold Moon High School, South Park, and there is already a man. It's only fifty-six hundred dollars for twenty-three. Then we had some monies in South Park and Route Number Six, I'm not sure those will be completed, though that's part of the money that will be in the. But those are named project house. And you go one more slide down, and this is just, and FY invitation. This is showing the total. Outstanding bonds. As well as the entire property. Has incorporated into the development. Our. Village, the Hady. So for the far lower right hand corner, over the life of all of these kids. We can go from three out thirty-eight million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And we're sure in the development.
Otherwise, you don't have some sense.
It is basically, well, I think that's.
And you know that.
Is it all in itself, or does this have included any? Like if we had to put down streets or something, is it all?
It would be based on that, if we put it down like.
I think the bond, it wasn't part of the management, right?
And then the remaining sheets are, it's actually the. And then the remaining sheets are the cash flow, the beginning of the year. And we will, or we've already updated and presented down these, so we have a within the screen for now. Understood by. And then figuring out coming out, leaving. And that's all I have. Yes, I mean, we talked about what.
I might, I might, I have a, I have a. I know, it's a. No, I have a.
We got two charts.
The two charts.
Which is a wonderful chart. Yes, and the big one, it's, it's the big gap.
There you go.
Yeah.
There you go. Now we have the.
This is just one TIF number seven. But if this. Yes, when this come to me and we start leaving on the board, this money will rapidly reduce.
Thank you for your vote.
And so what you're saying is if you. And continue to work with the airport. Yeah. That's still remains in twenty.
Correct, and those, I believe, which is sixteen undeveloped identified flats. That are out there, so much air could be.
Why? You know, particularly next to L R, you have kind of the two taddy, their lock, right next to that.
Yeah.
You just gotta keep in mind when you deal with it all, after you're good, you'll have airport land needs requirements.
Right, that's a challenge, same challenge as the.
Every lot brings its own. Uh, advantage in terms of maybe it's on a runway, so you're looking for like an aerospace type. Or, you know, so every, every lot has its own story, where you've learned from the airport, even last week, that's a reason. We're trying to find the right users for.
All right, and since we're on each chart, I'll have yours. If you know what can be. Very last page. This one?
It's pretty good.
Pretty good. This is just for information, I'm not going to go into it, but over the years, the city has often extended some different development agreements throughout the years. Um, some more, versus having a general fund property tax remakes, and we're actually coming to close. Once the sales tax remakes. Better, I mean, these are large ones. Seven hundred fifty thousand. Hotel, hotel tax remakes, and we have an additional rebate and S M A's for hotel businesses for twenty two. So you can see each year, for the total, we've been twenty four, and while one point seven million out, the property is additional extended. That we. Rates. One point eighty, point five, about one. If you know that. If you would think, if you're monitoring, watching, come home with. Now that will happen.
Further discussion, council? Undertain a motion to approve TIF contest presented.
Will be approved, second.
That's Oliver and Monsieur. Uh, the further discussion. Done, roll call please, Oliver, Monsieur.
Ah.
Jack.
Daniel.
Ah.
Finch.
Ryan.
Orion.
Ah.
Rachel.
Ah.
Nick.
You're on the number twenty, the land bank.
We have not a lot to say on this, so the lighting has been burned to. Eight hundred number. Eight nineteen, eight nineteen. So based on that, um, the mission of yours that bought and. Yeah, but we. But, um, right now, we do have funding, we can go about a grant. That, um. We will make it through the end of twenty twenty six. And in twenty twenty five, we do need to be living our. It would be nice to be able to be smart and. That's all I have.
Much, um, and we move to the very, oh, this one I have a question. For y'all, it's twelve o'clock. We have one, two, three, five items that we can finish before two. Six, actually, we go to number twenty six. Would you like to pause for twenty minutes for lunch? Wow. Twelve thirty, really take a minute or twenty three.
I'd like to pile food in my mouth.
Pile food into your mouth, you're gonna take a break right now, that's fine, I'll take a twenty minute lunch on that. Here on your focus, chef. Um, or do you have any counter response on five hundred questions, low?
objections. Twenty three, none of us. And then, discover the end of the call. And it's very quickly reached out. And we have now saving, we have people. I have all the big. After my saving that came through when we talked about. When we talked about the cash flow that. This would be for, we have a whole socket path, and I don't. Fund, uh, finding. Two hundred ninety six thousand dollars. Our aggregate at cash flow, for the first part, which is the price of the tax thing, to six point two million dollars. And we have to have that back available or something. We just have more than that available right now. And after, after we end there, from the very beginning, I'm continuing to help the parks, so this is how we. So the book is flash, so I'd be, the people are, I'm not all these, have two hundred seventy five percent. And it's going on the road there for twenty four years. And if they turn, go one page in the chart. That will be for revenues and expenditures and cash flow, everything for. And if you have any questions to add, then we'll write it in the chat.
Oh. Yeah, please, go.
And we'll do a motion on all of them. Put it in the panel, we have time. Look, we know here. You know. This is the foundation, that we slowly finally. Built it, that we got to buy a condo. For me, the other one we found, we had actually done. Just did at eight point three, about four point four million dollars. And we'll be moving from the next couple of years, and in future, never goes wide. And as you know, part of what we do at this time, is we're trying to fund the unfunded liability. I mean that. We do that, I'm worried. Although at the third level, we are, we are ready, and if you want to do a. Doing a very big job. Thank you, the TIF. And move down to our staying state. We're not from there, we're clearly saying that we probably, probably, and they're coming to the end, adding to the outstanding value. Look at the chart, this page. Picture of. Working very, very nicely. And then the last page in this section. Is showing all of our unfunded liability. And we actually have a couple of fund balances, moving that. Off all the guy's way. Our police and fire pension. As you know, which is the P O D. Unfortunately, we, in the year twenty twenty two, in market crash, we actually. We lost about seven million. Top and the. And. The actuarial reports run out. There's a lot in the. One. And anyway, um. The year to date, interest rates that have come through for the year so far, it's like we are only completely made up a lot from last year. We're not necessarily going to gain this year, but we have two year ability to last, so it's kind of. So when we can, please, if I were to mention. Where I am down, that would be showing you how we're still taking money away. It was a very. Given down the I M R F, it's actually unfunded by their actuary report, we are. It's at negative ninety percent, and we are open to funding. I anticipate, though, the interest rates, we mentioned this last two days, that I M R F took. Don't get. From. That's gonna flip around, I wish they'd be a little more. Ask the. We have a good one, we have a good one, Illinois, and it's a very good. And we skip down into retirement, it, retirement. Um, it's been kind of hanging right at that. Sixty nine, seventy, and one, or we're at. Seventy point five million, or about thirty two cents, and then going to. And that's going to be good level, not only funding, not only allowing. It'd be wonderful, but we have a sense that it's really not necessary, you know. Try to do that, our asset values are going to pop, and then go stay without. That's all I have for active and retiring. One. I believe it comes. And customs. And net. Again, this is a very, very well managed fund. And we look at that cash balance. Four, three. There are two of those fund balances, where I can show you these cash balances down, and we're still the classic bubble. And so. She won the live this time, she hasn't seen it well, felt like. Forward. So you got a lot of, on the cover, you know. Whatever you think. Most case, if he ever did run out, he's going to have several hundred to fall. This one is green, this is sort of on the now, this is funded slightly over for now, although, how it's. I'm actually doing with this number. Chart on this. Page. We're on an annual basis, we bring in, they can vote. Hang out. And the very last page in this section. We have premiums and plans. And our premiums have been pretty steady, and I think, I guess, and we are going to be doing that forward now. In November, for the next year. And exactly around this time. And the funny, second half of that's made from different ones. It was only the young, the one point six, the one point five. And. It's not before she takes the hanging number, and she's like, I don't know. I don't know, you're gonna find, you go through the actuary, we'll find it out, and we'll get actuary. You have no questions, who's on?
Question?
Um. For the bottom period, saying, maybe there was a year, is it all? Eight year average. You know.
We have.
But none of those lines are about to. So that ends up breathing or not showed here.
It's me, I'm breathing. Recognize. That's how we do it. We, we follow. Ricky? The fund is doing very well. Four oh seven. And the funds don't actually look. Going to the twenty to twenty five percent, or the time they have in the cap, a fund reserve. That's the following. And if you look at the lines below the bracket above. That is showing the minimum of the twenty five percent. That means that we want the minimum of that level, plus a hundred and fifty thousand of cash. Because if you know, and I was thinking some of those ones, he can really fluctuate on the year. Another, if you have sort of a five year. So the people look for reserves, they're trying to see where they're going, how they're. But it's functioning, just exactly, I'm not feeling, this team are very conservative, they really. They really look at everything in the front of the place, as well as living profit, we want to do it. And if you take the chart. Again. So that it's not, because this, the revenues coming in, these funds are full, very city. So we want an annual funding that doesn't jeopardize. Even though the expenditures might fall off. But on average, the. So what we might be able to pick that is the next. And these are. Software, if I had was software, hardware, and other capital expenditures for this fund. Remaining work for being salary to operate in that day. But the one thousand and fifty, we have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars converted in software. And I want you to. And let me just be. But these pretty much all, within the. And if it comes in the dust, and they want to move forwards, he could come about and I would. So this is where we're dealing in how we. We got a lot of software coming out, this is going to be in half, twenty two, a break, one two thousand.
I didn't. I don't even know what I want to order, but we talked about buying software.
Yes.
It's already started, dark side, yeah. We actually proved that, to develop software. And that based for writing, because of taking all of ours, and then. Probably the top of life. Got ourselves patients, and basically, those. Waiting for software, you know, building out, uh, my system. So we're hoping to get out, but like. Uh, Dave, you're here, probably with the timeline, things that got that done.
We're hoping for end of July.
Yeah. Follow up process.
We're in the, the process gathering, information gathering process right now, with each of the departments, um, pretty much going over. What their current processes are for collecting the information from the public, or contractors, whoever. Um, and bringing it into electronic online processes that will automate. Yeah, some of these.
And.
Um, what is?
David.
That is our main, uh, network storage system. So we're replacing that, and then also the, 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 the host servers that run all of it.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah. What do you?
And we have the thing, we have one shop shop, that shop that's like, what is it? And. Do they follow down the line, from the old, that certainly don't have ground and boundaries, that the combination is. That network switching, and the capital, and we've got that.
Um, I'm sure you've done this, David. Um, I'm sure you've done this David. The uh, our, our new acquired property has a whole load of networks, network switches at the um Bridgepoint. Have you got inventory of what's ours, if they're reused all or not?
I, I haven't, I see them being usable, but
There's a lot of, I don't know, if there's a way to reuse.
Our, our switches, they are, are aging at the moment, and so I'm, I'm looking for well, what the next gen of those are going to be in that, that's why there's the pretty large line item for this coming year is our, our main core switch, uh, is end of life in the summer of twenty twenty five, so I'd like to buy its replacement next year and have the replacement here replaced, and we can do a switch over without having any downtime.
And in the last thing, I just want to make sure by topic, David, we don't have dollars, things, and we're covering it for two thousand and twenty five, we're out, at some point. Servers are part of the central power. And that will take some more, what I'm saying is going to be, we're going to have to end like our general security, you know, we don't have, don't have a very secure environment. And you don't want to lose, you know, the and it does come from the let's go in. And Sarah Martin, first we were seeing yes. Wondering. She continues to do a very good job to pull the engine together. We have earmarked in the budget, hiring a new man, another man to clear the records. People help additional, we're certainly in part of the development, along the range Diana of maintenance. And the place to, and in this, we're having adequate funding. So that all the things that we've got, we all keep going on. But to point something for what we've got. About something with the general factors, it even amount in the yellow, we didn't really they have seven hundred and thirty five to share in policy, who are about thirty five older, and again, nationally, I mean, it's those access amounts, you know, up and down, and they're paying twenty twenty six, it's lighting low, but how they're changing, they're and it's nice for all of our, so they have to be there, they're a large company. From the chart and we can see there's thoroughly funded expenditures in there. Great job, and then policy, and around a thousand. But big items in twenty four, we're happening inside the five thousand dollar order on the seller replacement, and then well, maybe because they've evolved into me, especially on your
It's supposed to be on the agenda, what she said, that somebody's, uh, put the one that she, it's postponed.
So you just lost the words.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't want to do it. Ever since, we're waiting for it.
Very creative.
Sure, um, that's not possible, I mean, the guy I posted, conventional housing, they have their own wall, and I posted full exhaust from the, from the surface of the walls. Um, but something like that would be super useful, we talked about it, you can get properly at fire stations, but really anything about inside garage or anything that are flooding. Um, the fire stations have a climate systems, but they can still use that to get that excess I, I did come up with it, but it was done twelve years ago, um, and it works great, but it's fair, it's we have to do it in stages.
What did you want me to question?
Station two, conditions over there, maybe other things, uh, anger things earlier than
Still some meaning on fuel conditions, uh, certain, uh, street more on the V eight, which is another position, uh, station.
Oh, in fact, sure, um, so there's a lot that needs to be done at fire station two, um. As soon as you start to look to repair or upgrade one portion of the building, all of a sudden other things start to come in themselves, we found out insulation is so far in the walls, um, we found that there's not enough ventilation in the ceiling, um, for the exhaust from the bathrooms. The bathrooms themselves all need to be updated, but once we pull down the ceiling, I would find that it doesn't look right, I don't know, the black thing, but there's something in the ceiling that needs to be adjusted before we actually go into work on the bathrooms, so it's just one thing after the next, so there's a big chunk of them that's earmarked for fire station two, so that we can address, they will use rescue. Kind of like in, once we start doing one, then we thought
Apparently you have, uh, it's a huge factor, issues in that, it's significant problems.
But what we really want to do, I don't want to wait, I was old and cheap, I said, you know, brother, I want to go sell this system. I saw the videos, really the day of the school, back, uh, my yeah, it really was, I did often, then you got, because the overall issue. So again, right, some of these expenses, in the current year, not waiting so, H two, I'm hoping that's the best to do some of the things, place of ditching a smaller party. Like, right there in the bathrooms, you know, the sewer, you know, so with bigger, bigger thirsty nights, of course, insulation. If something's done down, go around. It's really, it's really no, I think we're going to be bringing some numbers forward, I don't ask chief, that just want to ensure that there are healthier working, living. So.
Thank you. It was the eight, and when you look at that hatch and that's how I have a and then moving on to please. Sorry. With building, the old, like old it was a big problem here, we have further, actually, we don't get, but we have had a terrible backlog of vehicles. So I think they're already basically, we are finally working our way out of the background. So we look at history, and we look back in twenty two in the bright yellow. We had four million dollars of money, we could do just so far, I'm finding but now we're this, we fund that adequate funding. There is an excellent job, part of the in-house. And look at my
Remember it? I think we have to look
And can we go through like, we only show, maybe I did on my plan. But this is the list of two hundred and fifty vehicles. That there are overseas, and if you take a look at the very last page. They have a bottom of the yellow. Each and every year for ten years, and all, all there are but in fact, in the basic, she lived her duty, she didn't want to be make it fit with our plan. And as you know, long as that people are women, space girlish, and they work together. She tries to make different thoughts in one thing, and they are big job. It is very good to have. Go to that chart. That's the open, and that creates spending over the revenue, we can do that. And then we go one more page over. And then I'm going to be in the side of it. This list has applied from three years. It has a list of many people here that really no longer come forward. And just have a lot of these funding, the weapons, the getting here. And only there is in a rich, powerful, that shows how we pressure them. If by chance, that Sarah, we change it, change this one to I can just hear in total about our funds. One for eight million dollars, and we have a or a control one for only eight hundred if I'm considering, um, highlights, anything to say about any of them, but
Sure, um, so the biggest expense is going to be coming out of the general fund, this year is going to be the ambulances, um, typically, we're not going to see this expense be this high. However, at this time, we have to replace the ambulance bodies as well as their so you can actually keep the back of the ambulance and mount them a couple of times, um. For this particular set of replacements, we've actually, uh, decided to move to a truck platform from the van, that will be have right now a basic machine here for mechanics to be able to work on engine components. Uh, so that will be helpful, and then for the increased haul volume, historically, we have replaced the, the areas at one year at a time, but because we've been running so many extra haul, all of them are around the same, uh, mileage. So even though they're fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, we're placing them at a same time, but they're all almost two hundred and five miles. Um, typically, you'll run an ambulance anywhere from four and a half to five years in a frontline capacity before you move it to more like a resource status, um, and so right now, we're at six, seven, and eight, so they, they've done a great job, we've got engine replacements on all of them so far, so it, it's just but normally, you don't see an expensive, because on the next one, we'll ring off the box on a new
and we will to put them to command, and I think I've heard them saying, then we'll see a couple of vehicles that are on the list. And this is where Sarah has and no longer and then one last highlight, that we talked about the number of people. The engines need future replacements to be, it is the same, one of these that we know where it is a very large fleet, it's a big job. That's all I have?
Two, we got myself a mic all the time, I have a paying attention, close, we've got one, great job, Sarah. Great job, uh, chief, uh, anybody. This is what I'm
Yes, it sounds like one of our good engines will be arriving, uh, sometime one day after. It's nice to get one of them, yeah, with our guys, uh, certain and, uh, we can get us here, which cross, and it's, uh, for the council meeting, very kind of plus L, uh, lot, and see the mini cover, or it's all spot from we'll cut it out and go out, but, uh, see all.
Fair enough. If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to work internal service responses to them. And C S, um, special. Thanks for keeping an eye on all this. Be fair. Nothing further, please, all persons, C S, all just so we know, we'll go through these that don't need any action, but we do need to do and editing stuff then because of the and this move on this year, and so we do need to get to the speech, here we go.
Thank you. Going to, I just offer by default, I'm number twenty three. Newsroom death is only because we mix two hundred. Then you, um, that, we can tell a lot of you, all of our and that's the combination of only ones that are outstanding in that next page. Are those pension obligation that we just didn't map it on, but along with that, coming in, they didn't know we got those, and I looked it up, Paul.
Yeah.
One point eight four for thank you for the screen.
Right at the time, we were
that's and that money you will only be paid for the pension, obviously, out of the general fund, so that really helps and the other thing with the death that I just want to point out is on November the fourteenth, we will be presenting a tax abatement for the next. And what that is, is that all of the debt will not link to this year. All of that debt that we're seeing currently outstanding, so this is what we call this thing with a good team, revenue stream. Is seen with a booting revenue streams and then work to pick up. And they'll get. For due price. Utility burden. She owns, so we actually have a base property. Not fishing property. The only one that comes to me, we probably. Is our pension obligation.
Okay, want to add any questions? Five thirty six.
If you look in the first block of numbers. That is the city's contribution, and you can go back to two thousand and forty one. We were paying over twelve million dollars in contribution. Pension. It is now below four million. For our annual contribution. But in addition to the annual contribution, now available for last. Two years. That is the debt service to move on, so five point six million. We take the five six of that three million of the dollar. And you subtract from that twelve million if you pay, there is the rise of the date. Then you have to look out of the.
Please.
And that will just continue to increase to.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, that was.
Then I have. So if you look historically, the last year of the year, it jumped from ten to eight.
Uh, so now I have additional budget items, if any, from the council. I know that I did email you, or I did email from two, many years. And I did get a, uh, petition. I took the benefit commission in their last meeting to speak. That they they really wanna up their, what they can hand out or sponsor to ten thousand dollars from the four thousand that they get, so I thought we should talk about that too.
I'd like to maybe watch it in a brief.
That's to me and Finch, any discussion?
Yes, I just.
I just, I'll talk about what's your budgets that they that they run. They, right now, they found that the last, um, related to different organizations within this district, but they're trying to broaden that, right, um, to. They are also trying to sort of get gain some new traction, there's some new permission on there who want to do more and just pass out money. Um, so they took, they had a, they don't need quite as often as. Expect to see that as an advice as the. There been a problem and with. All right, if there's anything further, I will call on ten thousand instead of. Oh, that's to me and then with Finch. Who's with CS?
Bye.
Finch, all right, Brian, Castro, Richmond. Thank you very much. Is there any other additional budget? To address any final questions on the twenty twenty. We've done a very thorough job once again. Once again. And then, and the balance that would be.
She is not against.
I'm the then, then to forget.
She's not against her, she is with me every minute and.
You see another one.
Right, and we only have to number twenty seven, um. Entertained a motion to establish an estimated property tax levy for twenty twenty four. Very. Which is the key. That's only total. Mention Murphy. Discussion. None, well, please, all persons CS. Any? Finch, all right, Brian. The next item, I'll entertain the motion to establish that NSA number five estimated property tax levy for twenty twenty four. I was to me and in the classroom. Discussion. So if there's nothing further, roll call please. All persons CS. Ryan. Councilman. Nick.
Hi.
Murphy. Please, the next one is to establish NSA number six estimated property tax levy. Eighteen. CS and Finch. Any discussion? None, well, please, Cynthia. Any? Finch, all right, Brian. Next one. Nick. Murphy. Last but not least, motion to amend the twenty twenty three budgeted projection that presented.
I'm making a monkey food group. And twenty three budgeted projection that presented, as well as items from today's.
Thank you. Second with this finish. Great, discussion. None, well, please. All persons CS. Any? Finch, all right, Brian. Next one.
Hi.
Man, I'm asleep, so on Tuesday, what will happen?
And then we'll prepare for the public to on the budget, which is. Then it will cooperate all the time that. And he can have his. I'm all hanging on.
Thank you all, enjoy the rest of your day, thank you for being here. Oh, sorry. Skip to the miss ladies. Uh, thank you to anyone who went to any event. Um, going in this day for time, there was a. There were two group events yesterday, um, and there's more coming this next week, Wednesday, there's a. Worrying. For this.
Uh, it's more.
More, more graphic.
More graphic revenue.
Yeah, but it's right around the same time as the public art. Well, so. But any, in any case, I think gladly coming up, you did something with, you're on street with two single, but still representing. This business from anyone on the.
All right, I just like to thank all the staff for all the work you've had to do these things together, send it.
To me.
Um, I just wanna thank also, we had wonderful Trump retreat, I saw it yesterday. We had fire, water, C E D, library, parks, police. Uh, it was a great turnout for the city, well, and you can, uh, it's good.
So we're looking at it today, uh, one of us, well, uh, they got. It's this, it was a group program. Well, they actually. Uh, oh, yeah, thank you for working with the town chamber each day. We're fully needed, and I'm glad to see you.
Nice family business, nice job.
We have no executive session, so I need a bunch of. No, fish. We have the fish, all in favor. The fish in person, see you.